All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order as the city council meeting for the city of Holliday Island, our regular meeting of March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Let's start with a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Simmons.
Here.
Councilmember Elwood.
Here.
Councilmember Graves.
Here.
Councilmember Mills.
Here.
Councilmember Benton.
Here.
All present, Mr. Mayor. I declare a forum. On the agenda, I apologize for this agenda being a work in process right up until the exact minimum, but have a couple of changes that we need to make. First of all, the first thing on the agenda, our new business, reviewing the interlocal agreement with the sheriff. We're still not done finalizing that yet, so I scratched it from the agenda. The resolution that I had on here is two thousand and twenty-two double oh three for the helicopter in Veterans Park. I'm scratching that. Brad Handley had asked me if the city council would consider a resolution where we would accept responsibility for maintenance of the helicopter in what used to be Veterans Park, the Navy still is Veterans Park up there. And because the government still owns the helicopter, it was assigned to the VFW, the VFW was folded, so now they need another governmental entity or official body or something like that to take responsibility for the helicopter. Or I guess the Army takes it back again. But at any rate, Brad didn't get the resolution prepared in time for tonight's meeting, so we'll take that up at some future meeting. So, a resolution, the resolution for the sheriff's substation in the park is going to be two thousand and twenty-two double oh three. And the resolution authorizing the next application for a state aid to streets grant is going to be two thousand and twenty-two, what will four? And I gave all the council members copies of those. I would make one more suggestion, and that's that we review, we move reviewing the contract and rate proposal for the Carroll County Solid Waste Services and ordinance two thousand and twenty-two double oh four up to the top of the agenda so that Mayor McKinney doesn't have to stay here for the whole meeting because that's why he's here. So with those changes, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Make motion to be approved, the amended agenda.
Second.
Ken Mills made motion, Lynn made the second. Any discussion? Home in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The revised agenda is approved. We have minutes that was distributed from the February fifteenth meeting. Any questions on the minutes?
I had one change. One of the first items I saw there, I don't have it front of me, but it said broadcast instead of broadband.
Where was that?
That was like the second item discussed or something.
Yeah, under standing committees, number two, should be broadband grant. Okay. That can be changed. I'll also comment, I had changed, I think, three words under the, under page three, under, towards the end of resolution two thousand and twenty-two, oh oh three for the sheriff contract. After, when you go to the top of the next page, I believe, where it says Mayor Keys and the sheriff are to meet, I changed that to what's suggested because that sentence didn't read right. So it now reads, a meeting between district manager Presley, Mayor Keys, and the sheriff are, was suggested. So with those two corrections, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'm if we approve that's amended.
Second.
Lynn Ma, Lynn Dodd, the motion to approve the minutes has amended. Jerry seconded it. Any discussion? Home in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both minutes are approved with changes. Moving on to ceremonials, recollections, proclamations, or in memoriam, any announcements or proclamations? Here are none. We'll move on to reports of standing committees, economic development. Jerry?
A couple of things to report. Got a call from Rodney Balance, who's been working with us on broadband grant, saying that, some good news on the sixteen, sixteen point seven million dollar North Carroll County grant to install fiber in underserved areas. And they expect that, according to Representative Rowe, State Director, they expect that approval come sometime in the summer. And Rodney expects to be laying fiber optics in northern Carroll County, including Holliday Island sometime in the fall.
Okay.
We'd be covered by that? We'd be covered by that too?
According to Rodney, yes.
Oh, good.
That was the second. The first grant, the, can't remember what his name is, the two point one million dollar internet consultant that they hired has recommended that they table the seven, the smaller grant to do the feasibility study, and that would be included in this new grant. So, that's, that's what he reports. Then the other thing on economic development and, where'd you go? Jerry, do you mind if I report what we talked about, your liquor license?
No, no, go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, well, one of the things that Farmhouse, my farmhouse and cafe requested to boost their bottom line was a, for us to approve a liquor by the drink ordinance, which we did, and they'd been working diligently on their application, and that's, has been approved, and he's in the period now where he's got to run a legal notice in the local paper, and then, what's the date here?
That was completed as of today. We got our affidavit for it, and we sent all of that to ABC as of today. The problem was is that paperwork hadn't been in by last Friday. We missed it three days, or it has to go for another month. It was, it's all been approved and done except for they have their meeting on one Thursday or whatever it is per month. So it'll be April's, the third Thursday of April when we get everything done. Unless we just get, happen to get lucky and they go ahead and put it on the agenda for us, but, but it, everything else has been completed, so that should open the door on that to get us moving forward.
Very good. And then, along those lines, it's not covered, that ordinance is that the Hot Box Pizza contacted the mayor and is, no, but ABC contacted the mayor to alert us that Hot Box Pizza has filed for a beer and wine license, so.
I assume that at some point Rodney's going to come to us with a plan, or Pauline's going to rule with us, and...
Okay, yeah, I'll ask him about when that would be appropriate.
Because the first thing people are gonna ask is, when can I get hooked up?
I mean, Mayor McKinney may be a little...
We're doing something unbearable, trying to get...
If they did, Berryville did get its first grant approved.
Planning Commission.
The Planning Commission last met on February fifteenth. We passed a resolution that recommended about forty pages of zoning regulations to the city council. We did not meet in March because it's not well advised to proceed on more zoning regulations until the city, city attorney has adopted those forty pages, and the council's adopted them as well. So we're kind of on hold for what we might be doing in the Planning Commission.
Okay, I, I need to get with Justin and see where that is on his to-do list. His to-do list seems to be pretty long. Okay, and then you have some edits and things that you're gonna discuss under...
I thought we were, right, I thought we did that in the discussion. No, no. Okay.
All right, financials. Wes distributed the financials for February.
Yes.
Any questions on the financials? Any comments, Wes?
Not in particular, I guess. I'll just comment, in the street fund, we did receive, I think it was sixty-seven thousand Property taxes, our share from last year, sixty, sixty-nine thousand, sixty-nine, one twenty-four ninety-eight. So that was received in February. We had paid the two hundred and fifty thousand to the state DOT for next year's construction, and we had held back on the balance of fifty-seven thousand because we didn't have money in the account at that time. The sixty-nine thousand was, check was delivered to us after I was gone on vacation, so that was, I sent that, I think, on March eighth, for the balance of our share of this year's construction. I sent that to the DOT, and I checked this morning, the check had not cleared yet, but on the other hand, the first check, which was sent probably the sixteenth of February, didn't declare, didn't declare a due in March, so I'm not surprised that the fifty-seven hasn't cleared out. State doesn't have the same cash flow pressures that cities do. So, other than that, you know, we ended the month with a total of a hundred and forty-four thousand eight thirty-four in the bank, and of course, that included that money from the Carroll County, but the fifty-seven thousand for the balance on the, this year's construction had not been paid out yet, so that came out in March.
Okay. Have you seen deposits from the county for January, February, March of this year yet?
No. The only thing I've seen is the check that they brought to you.
It's the middle of the month, so it may, you may want to make a courtesy call to the collector and see, because I think they distributed that money early in the month.
Yeah, now, after this got straightened out, you know, the, was it either the treasurer or the collector emailed that it was set up and we would receive our first check in April.
Yeah, I believe you're right. Yeah, I think you're right.
But wasn't the sixty-nine thousand we received for just the months in last year?
Yes, sir.
So what happened to January and February?
That's what we're waiting to see.
Do you think the April check will include it?
We're, we're, that's what we're anticipating. We'll see. Just for your information, it took us a whole year and threatened a lawsuit to get our, our share of the three mil county road tax, so we finally got it last month. Okay. So, any other questions, comments on the financials? We've all entertained a motion that we accept the financial statements.
I'll move that we accept the financial statements for February.
Lynn made the motion, do I have a second?
I'll speak.
Go ahead.
Ken seconded it. Any discussion? Home in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Then, let's see, we can move on to old business, there is none, new business, we moved the, the discussion on solid waste up to the top of the agenda, so the first thing we're going to do is talk about the contract that Carroll County Solid Waste has, the draft contract or proposed contract. It's not signed or anything yet, so it's just a proposal at this time. And Mayor McKinney, I'd like to introduce our honored guest here, Mayor McKinney, who's not only the mayor of Berryville, but he's the president of the Carroll County Solid Waste Board of Directors, the president of the Arkansas Municipal League, best liked dad in Berryville. But Tim's here to, to answer any questions that we might have. So, Tim, you wanna just give everybody a little bit of a background on how the Carroll County Solid Waste?
Don't mind, I'm gonna stand up or I'll start hitting myself with my hands. I get a talking with my hands sometimes, but thank you all for having me over, and you know, congratulations for being a city. I can't imagine the daunting task of finally go from ground zero, but from what I've seen from a distance and heard through the municipal league, y'all are doing a good job over here and doing it right, so we're glad to have you. Just gonna get bigger than a barrel now. You hit your bell.
We got a special set on us.
The Carroll County Solid Waste, just to kind of give you a little history of it, it was formed back in the early nineties whenever the state passed a bunch of legislation trying to improve our recycling rates and address our landfill issue shortages, and they set up all these solid waste districts around the state. And originally Carroll County was a nine county district that went from Mountain Home to Bitter Creek. But over the years, they've all changed and everything, and now Carroll County is its own solid waste district. It's the smallest one in the state. We actually had to get legislation passed to be able to form our own district. But the reason we did is, if you call down to ADEQ and ask them, what should a solid waste district look like, they say, look at Carroll County. It's been going for a long time. It was actually started out with Roger Miners, our director, and then Phil Jackson, that's who most of y'all know Phil, with, he ran it for years, but it's been, it's been a good success. We have all of our equipment paid for, we have competitive rates. I know we went through what you all are going through in Beryl when we passed a solid waste ordinance, and it's, it's contentious, it is. I mean, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna lie to you, it's, what we look at in Berryville is our streets, and I'll give you all a hint, in the years to come, you're gonna find the streets are the most expensive thing, you try to maintain with the least money to do it. But, you know, you don't have two or three different trash trucks running all over your town every week. Everybody's got trash, just like everybody needs water service, sewer service, police protection, planning, zoning things that we all have to live by when we're in a large group. And what the, what it's done for us is, you know, we, Carroll County Solid Waste, we do not make money. You know, we try to invest all our money back into our equipment, our manpower, you know, and if we have any debt, it's just for a short, so a short-term lease on a truck or something like that, so we're able to keep our rates very competitive. And our, our three main things is to provide quality service at a reasonable price and promote recycling. When you recycle with Carroll County, it gets recycled, it doesn't go to a landfill, and I can assure you, there's a lot of places in the state that aren't that way. So, you know, whatever decision you all make on this ordinance, you know, it's your decision, I'm certainly not here to tell you how to do your business, but I can tell you, I've been a mayor for thirty-two years, I was there when the Carroll County Solid Waste District was formed, and I've seen it go through all the thing. And I, I can tell you, it's a quality organization, and it's, it's just to serve the people. We're not, we're not, we don't have stockholders, we don't have owners, it just serves Carroll County. And it's served the city best, whether it's Carroll County or whoever that wants solid waste hauler. You got the trucks in town on the same day, you got one trust truck, big trash truck going up and down the street instead of the other, and everybody can get rid of the trash. If you live in a house, if you get mail, if you eat, you got trash, you gotta have trash service. And one thing about this is, if you've got a complaint, this is a comment, this is George, he's our operations, our manager, he's our, he's a field specialist, he retired, and he can probably ask more questions about the actual operation of our business than I can, but if George can't fix your problem, it's not like that's end of the road. Holliday Island has two members on the Carroll County Solid Waste Board, it's kind of, you're the only one with two members. It's kind of a fluke, we haven't that large member, then we adopted Dan whenever he became mayor, and so if you don't get the quality of service you want from Carroll County Solid Waste, you try George. If George don't fix you up, you call Dan. Dan don't fix you up, you call me. That, that's our goal. We want to provide a quality service for our citizens in this county and do it the way that helps everybody, you know. We, and I can assure you that whenever we started this, I had a lot of people, probably one of the biggest crowds, we had a city hall for a while, and, but I can tell you, people that opposed it at the start have come back to me and said, you know, this does make sense, you know, we, we got a water bill, our trash bill's on, we write one check and it's all done, we don't have to listen to two or three trash trucks coming down the road every week, so, you know, I applaud you for your efforts, and I hope you all continue forward with this, and if you get a contract with Carroll County Solid Waste, I can assure you, we will provide quality service. And I'll answer any questions, and George is here also.
Okay, thank you. When we get into, I'm sure there's gonna be some questions when we get into the actual review of the contract here, so...
Would you like me to stay for a while?
Yeah, why don't you stay until we at least get through this part? Otherwise George would be here by himself.
You would step in, I don't know.
He took.
All right. The, well, first of all, I guess I can add a, one or two comments to what Tim said, you know, I agree with everything he said, you know, the trash trucks, multiple trucks running up and down the road, and double axle trucks being a particular problem with scuffing the roads when they have to make tight turns is one of our reasons for wanting to have one trash service. From Holliday Island's perspective though, we also have, we have to, we have to be aware of the fact that the city is ultimately responsible for meeting all of the environmental regulations, whether they be state, national, federal, or whatever, regulations, so we basically own the trash from the time you put it out on the, or the citizens put it out at the end of the driveway until, you know, the end of time. You never relinquish title to that trash. And so we are legally required to make sure that that trash is disposed of properly, and that it is being disposed of, not just, you know, thrown in somebody's backyard or burned in a barrel in somebody's backyard. So, we don't have the talent, we don't have the resources, we don't have the knowledge nor the experience to be able to follow behind multiple trash haulers and see what they're doing with their trash, making sure that they're disposiving, disposing of it appropriately and things like that. So, to go with, you know, the advantage that Carroll County Solid Waste has is that they are, they operate basically, and I'm not gonna use the right terminology, but they operate basically under ADEQ, the Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality. They, they're licensed by the state, they, they exist under the authority of the state, and they are the only certified, George, if I'm using the right terminology, environmental waste or cleanup facility in Carroll County. So if there's, you know, if there is a site that needs to be cleaned up, they are the ones authorized to do that. And if there's a reported problem with the illegal dumping, if somebody calls the Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality and reports a, an illegal dump or something like that in Holliday Island, the call comes to George, and he has to investigate, and he has to make sure that it gets cleaned up, either by, you know, getting the cooperation of the people, or if they won't cooperate, by citing them and taking legal action. And then, in the final analysis, if it doesn't get cleaned up, they go in and clean it up, and I guess we put a lien against the property for the cost of doing the cleanup. Now, with that said, we would wish that that wasn't be necessary in Holliday Island, that we're all, you know, environmentally conscious, law-abiding citizens, but I have a list of twelve properties right now that are in bad need of attention, bad need of attention. And so it's not a little problem, and it's a growing problem. The, the less control you have, the more the problem grows. So with that preface, I'll open it up to council member discussion on the agreement.
With the liability the city has with its trash from now until the end of time, does the Solid Waste District segregate Holliday Island trash from Berryville trash? So if there's a problem in Berryville Corner, it's their problem and not ours?
If there, if there's a landfill issue, guys got a leak or anything, and that, say that becomes a kind of mine side or something like that, they'll go back to the landfill records and say, eight percent of that trash in that landfill is Berryville's, forty-two percent Springdale's, and it'll be about that way. They keep permanent records of how much trash you ran into it.
So all your members participate in the recovery and cleanup costs? All of your customers as a group, by percentage?
By percentage.
Like you said, eight percent, forty percent, whatever?
That, that's the way it would, it would come down to court decisions, from what I've heard in the past, you know, but it's a, but it, but Mayor Keys is right, in environmental lawsuits and issues, they may just because they pick whoever they want to, but that trash, if you have a legal dump, whatever it is, whoever's trash is in there, they, they go by percentage if they're responsible for it.
Okay. Is there such a thing as anything that might have been done before we became a city? Wouldn't be the city's responsibility?
That would probably be, you're getting off in the legal things now, but I don't have very much what I can.
Okay.
I would think that the city cannot be held responsible for things that happen prior to our incorporation, so...
And if you have, if you have, like Mayor Key's just talking about, big illegal dump here somewhere in downtown, they're not gonna go after Holliday Island, they're gonna go after who had that dump. You know, it's not, it's not gonna be because you never collected that trash. And so, you know, what, what cities are responsible for mostly is... that trash. And so, you know, what cities are responsible for mostly is once you collect that trash, it's disposal, disposing it in a responsible manner.
Okay.
No, I would, I would put a little exclamation on that, in that as long as we identified it, or if we, if we never identified it because it was hidden to us, that it existed, I think the city would be in the clear. If we identified it and we were trying to deal with it, making a good faith effort to deal with it, I think we would be in the clear. If we're aware of it and we turn a blind eye and we let it exist, I think we're in the suit. So, that's why enforcement is necessary. Once it's identified, then I think we're, you know, we are responsible for compliance.
So, if we were to stick with, you know, four to eight carriers, we would be responsible for all eight of them if they didn't play by the rules?
Right. Now, they have, they have to be because, here again, I'm kinda talking out of school, but since Carroll County is a Solid Waste District, anybody that wants to haul trash in Carroll County has to be licensed by Carroll County Solid Waste, right? So, there's theoretically some control there. However, you know, I'm sure they don't have, unless somebody reports it to them, they're, they don't have the resources either to follow behind.
I was using that as an example of why a single provider is.
Yeah.
Prefer.
Right. This is a problem that other counties have been trying to deal with for almost twenty years.
Yeah.
And I.
But without the force of the city, it was very hard to do anything.
Zip can.
Linda, you had a, are you done, Ken?
Yeah.
I mean, I can recount a few horror stories about it, but I don't know if you.
He's done, yeah.
I'm gonna put the timer on.
Thank you, Pat.
Linda, you had a question on some money in the contract?
The question that I sent you beforehand.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's kinda puzzling. When I read the proposed contract with Carroll County Solid Waste, and I'm no lawyer, but I've read a lot of contracts, and it, the first page says it's a contract between the city and Carroll County Solid Waste. But after you go outside of the first page, the other pages talk about the contractor. And the contractor's supposed to do this, and the city's supposed to do that, and what have you. And so, all the stipulations in the body of the contract are between the contractor and the city. Yet, it's unclear, it's not defined anywhere who the contractor is. It makes me think, okay, is Carroll County Solid Waste gonna hire a subcontractor that's gonna be driving trucks out here and collecting our trash? And then, if that was the case, what liability would be placed on that contractor, or Carroll County Solid Waste, or the city for failure to perform according to the contract, because they have no signature, signature, signature place in the contract? A subcontractor wouldn't. So, in the alternative, that perhaps that's not planned, and that Carroll County Solid Waste is operating all the trucks and doing all the collection and being responsible for that, it would seem to me like on the first page, maybe, it should be clear that, maybe in that first paragraph, that when you say Carroll County Solid Waste, and you said in parentheses, the district, you know, referred to as the district later on, that you'd also say, it's the contractor, it's referred to as contractor later on.
I'm no attorney, thank goodness, but I think you got a good point. I think, I think the Carroll County Solid Waste should probably be identified in the first page as the contractor.
That would, that would help me in everything, everybody.
Now, that's, that, you know, ask the lawyer, don't ask me.
Yeah.
There is, under definitions, there is, you know, contractor is listed under definitions, but here again, nowhere in the definition does it say that the contractor is Carroll County Solid Waste, so that.
I like one sentence.
Clarify that, too.
I do, too. So, can we make that change to him?
Yeah.
Okay.
Dan, I have a question. In the contract, I saw nothing about the franchise fee, which is mentioned in the ordinance. Why, why would that franchise fee not be delineated in the contract?
The way we do, is the ordinance sets your rules of how you're gonna operate, and those are permanent. You know, a contract can be amended from time to time. But just like the ordinance says, you know, everybody's gotta have service. It establishes that. And so, when it's in your ordinance like that, it doesn't matter who your hauler is, because that's a permanent thing, does the ordinance.
In fact, there is a paragraph in here, I don't know exactly where, but I remember.
In the contract?
It didn't specifically say anything about franchise fee, but it said that, that the ordinance, that, 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 the contract, by contract, they will follow our ordinance.
Okay.
So, there's a paragraph.
And there's a lot of legalese there. I mean, there's lawyers that spend days on that thing.
I have a comment. On page three, on the definition of elderly disabled accounts, the second sentence says, "The basis by the Solid Waste District for special pricing and services." I dig further into the document, and I find on page sixteen, where it talks about the elderly, disabled, and low-volume accounts, it talks about house-side service. It's the only place that house-side service word is used. So, I think we need to add a definition so it's clear that everyone knows exactly what that means, and there's no misunderstandings, as opposed to curb-side service.
Okay.
And is that the same thing as low income on the rate sheet?
That's what I gather.
I didn't actually work on this.
Just called low income on the rate sheet, same thing.
I had a question on that. I think people will be interested in cost, and particularly if they don't have much trash. And I looked at the rate sheet, and there is this special rate for low income slash one fifteen gallon bag. So, I'm wondering, is, is there an income test?
Well, I would guess it has to do with whatever the American Disabilities Act says, whatever's in that.
Well, it's not necessarily the same.
That's true. Well, it's in the same title. No, I'm sorry, it's not, it's low-volume accounts.
You know, so I was wondering if there was a special test on income, or is it just strictly based on the one fifteen gallon bag?
I don't know what's in there. The way we do ours, if you qualify for the state income tax credit on your electric bill, then you qualify for the low income rate. There's a program that exempts sales tax from electric bills for people under a certain income, and that's, that's the guideline we use.
So, that would be a test that the Carroll County Solid Waste would apply to the applicant, and they would take care of choosing what fee they should take?
George, you're not gonna get that.
It would be something the city would do.
I think that.
Oh. How do we, how do we determine the low volume, low income?
Well, there are different cities, like, like you guys, and great portion of different cities do different things. The way I do the count on a low-volume income is I determine that by elderly, disabled, which is a one fifteen gallon bag. It would, not mean we will only pick up that bag, but we will pick up more than that, and they will be overdue, just like they're overdue on everything else. But it's, it's basically then how, this is just a proposal that I wrote up.
Right.
Based on our others.
Yeah.
There's gonna be some, there's gonna be some changes, and you're gonna wanna do things, and we're gonna wanna do things before we can, you know, until we come to an agreement and the board, Carroll County Solid Waste Board, would then vote on. But, basically, there's a low-volume elderly, which is basically elderly people that don't have a large volume of trash. Now, for Holiday Island, there's also a, how's it worded in there, discontinued or vacation or?
You have, on page four, you call it vacation rate.
Okay.
And then on page thirteen, you call it the minimum basic service for when someone's not there. So, they're named differently in the document.
Okay. Well, that rate, that rate.
Is that the inactive rate?
That is the inactive fee, yes. If you're, if you're on vacation, or if you're, if you use this for a vacation home, or something like that, that is the inactive fee.
Okay.
In that case, they would have to notify you when they're using the property, or?
It depends on how the contract, the agreement is set. Were, if we do the billing, yes, they would notify us. If you guys do the billing through your water, water meters, they would notify you. So, that just, if we do the billing, yes, they would notify us, and we would take care of it.
Well, I mean, we were planning on having the water department send them the customer list every month, I suppose. But would they, would they, are we talking about the water has to be shut off during those months, or during those times that people are on vacation or gone, or part-timers, or?
No.
Or could they just notify them that they're not there?
I mean, he called it a minimum, minimum charge, so. I think that that should probably be between the homeowner and the district.
The way our county customers do it is they, they notify us when they're not on the country, but they're only inactive. They notify us when we come back, and then we take them off of, and go back to the regular, whatever their.
Yeah, we've got, we've got a lot of people that are here for three, three, four months, and then they're gone for six, and back again.
How do you handle managed properties, like condos and things, that may have tenants for a week and then go two weeks without any?
The Airbnb's?
Yeah, Airbnb, or just, you know.
Well, just rentals that change the rental people?
Short-term rentals.
You're not gonna be like Airbnb.
Yeah.
Yeah.
More than, oh, okay, someone that would rent out in the summertime, and then not leave like a closed business in the wintertime, or?
Well, like, these condos here are managed by Dane and Hinkins Place over in Breeka. Those are mountain rentals, and.
Most condominiums and multifamily dwellings have dumpsters.
Weekend rentals. I mean, there's a lot of those. People come for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, but they're not paying the water bills or anything. They're just.
And a lot of people own these properties out here specifically just to rent them out for weekenders.
Yeah, they're, they're never here.
Okay.
But I think, you know, places like that would definitely need trash service, just like everyone. Because those people are gonna come in and create trash on the weekends, and they don't have trash service, what's gonna happen? If they're gonna throw it out somewhere, and, you know, that's just having an Airbnb like that, you know, that's just the cost of doing business and that trash service.
Well, we're gonna, let's, let's get to our discussion done here first, and we'll open it up to the floor.
I guess, there's a few, though.
Yeah, they, just, just, you know, taking notes on all of the exceptions to the standard rules here with the rent that we may need to consider. But one thing, one thing we don't wanna do is create a bookkeeping nightmare for Carroll County Solid Waste, where somebody can say, "I'm gonna be here next week, so I'm gonna pay for trash, and I'm not gonna be here, you know, the second and third week of April, and then I'll be back for the fourth week of April, and then I'll be gone again for a month." And, you know, no. If, if they're gonna be gone for an extended period of time, like three months or something like that, yes, they can probably discontinue their, their service, and we'll build something, some flexibility into the rate structure. But, you know, there's gotta be some degree of reasonableness to it.
Yeah, I think there's gotta be clarification on a lot of these categories. I mean, the low-income, one fifteen gallon, I mean, you could have a family of four that's low-income, and, you know, they're producing a lot of trash, and fifteen gallons, that gives opportunity for some illegal dumping or hauling.
Yeah, I made a note, we need to define what, how you qualify for that nine dollar and seventy-one cent rate.
I was just curious, George, how, how do you define elderly? We talked about elderly.
You gotta be careful.
All of us.
I can be elderly. I probably am elderly, but how would you define it?
You gotta be very careful when you define it. And that may be the wrong word used. We actually define all that as the amount of trash used. We've got, and, and this is elderly, over sixty-five-year-old, single person or a couple, that does not produce much trash, doesn't have any kids in the house. So, we actually define it by volume. They will use fifteen gallons or more of trash, or fifteen gallons or less a week. Now, if they, if the volume, if they use two gallons, then they're not really on that, so that is probably not worded right. You know, they'd be on the regular two-bag, two-bag service if they use more than that.
Yeah.
Well, I qualified for what you said, but I generate probably seventy gallons in a week.
Yeah.
Wow. Really? Yeah, but you're not a recycler.
Maybe they're only fifteen gallon bags, though, come to think of it. They're probably only fifteen gallon bags.
If you recycle, you don't generate that.
You know, what size is your container? Is it a ninety?
Oh, it's a thirty-five gallon container. I mean, my trash can is thirty-gallon, thirty-five.
Sue and I, very seldom, have more than one thirteen gallon bag.
That's the size of the kitchen bag, all kitchen bag, yeah.
And we recycle.
I usually have two or three of those a week.
You're wasteful.
Yes, I do. On the bottom of my page ten, in section three, in the section holidays, I suggest that we list every holiday rather than leaving it as such other holidays as made be agreed. I think we ought to have a defined list of holidays, that they're not gonna perform service. All that's listed is Thanksgiving Day, Christmas Day.
That is the only holidays we do not run.
Okay. So, then we don't need the other such holidays as made be agreed to. We cross it out?
Yes.
Okay. I had a question more than, maybe a comment more than a question, I don't know. And it comes down to, it's the use of dumpsters again. We have, we have a lot of VRBOs out here, a lot of them. And some of them, maybe all of them, are operated by third parties. You know, the owner of the property simply contracts with some, you know, property management company. And they rent the places out, they collect the money, they clean the units, they dispose of the trash, they take the cost of trash collection out of the rent, and, you know, and they're. They take the cost of trash collection out of the rent and, you know, and their fees and everything else, and then they send what's left to the property owner. So, the property owner is paying for trash pickup through the property management company. I know of one incidence, of one instance here, because the person called me, she lives up in Missouri, owns four properties here, and has them managed for her. And that company has a dumpster, so they take, I don't know how many properties they manage, but they supposedly take the trash from all of these properties that they manage. And put them in the dumpster that they're paying for. I, I, I can see that, 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 that's a good business practice. I don't, it's not clear in my mind how we manage that. Because that company, that property management company, you know, they're gonna pick up clients, they're gonna drop clients. You know, how are we gonna keep up with whether or not all of these properties are actually paying for trash pickup and, and having it done properly? I don't have an answer to that, but it's something before we finalize this contract, it would, it's something that we're gonna have to figure out how to deal with. And I have another concern about dumpsters. If we're going to let a property management company have a dumpster and use it to collect trash from several properties, where is that dumpster gonna be located? We do not want dumpsters, um, sitting in the middle of residential areas, um, because it just happens to be centrally located. Or it's a lot big enough to hold a dumpster along with, you know, the, the rest of the property. Um, so that's, that's a question I would have. If we're going to allow for that, then, you know, where is the dumpster gonna be located? Are we gonna have a, a lump, a, a dumpster lot somewhere here in Holiday Island where all the commercial, um, accounts put their dumpsters? Also, if we, if we, if we allow property management companies to bundle like that, to bundle residences for trash collection, are we gonna let neighborhoods do it? What if me and my, you know, and six of my neighbors want to, uh, bundle, 'cause it's cheaper for us to get a small dumpster than it is for us to pay for, uh, curbside pickup? Are we going to allow that? I would say no.
I think you're gonna have to.
Again, because you don't want dumpsters in a residential area.
In your definition of this management company collecting trash from multiple locations, they are a trash collector, and they're not permitted to do that in this contract or our ordinance. They're gonna collect the trash.
They're individual residents and pay a fee.
I guess that's the way of looking at it.
I don't, I don't, you know, George said, Beryl, Little, Green Forest, and Eureka, they've all got little differences in their contracts, because they, each city's unique. And I think that's, Holiday Island certainly unique, and some of the, you know, the way you're set up with so many vacation homes and everything. What I would suggest is, is, is get you a committee and sit down with all these questions and, and customize your contract and make work for Holiday Island. You know, what works for Beryl might not be the best for Holiday Island, Eureka Springs, but y'all have some legitimate issues, and just hash them out the best you can. And I promise you, no matter how long you work on it, you'll, you'll get into it, you'll find something you missed. But I think y'all got a good handle on, on your property here and the people who live here and what their needs are, and I would just customize our contract with the Carroll County Solid Waste, if you choose them to, to match your town.
I would think Eureka would have a lot of similarities in that, there's a lot of D and Bs.
Yeah, we don't have time to talk about Eureka and that.
Surely.
I have another comment?
Yes.
Also, in section three, it's on page thirteen, and it's the heading mandatory service, trash accounts and billing procedures. The first sentence says, "The city ordinance, trash services in the city of Holiday Island is considered a part of the city's provision of basic utility services." We don't have any basic utility services. That language needs to change, I don't know what it would be. Bottom of my page thirteen, it's, uh, mandatory service, trash accounts and billing.
Did you number your pages?
I did, from the front to the back.
That's why we can't find the number.
I figured the number of the pages.
Section three, find section three at the top, and then it's.
I remember the paragraph you're talking about.
We're pages down.
We can, we can modify that, 'cause I don't try and find it then.
And then if we turn the page, it's the notices that, uh, in, uh, if a contract is to be changed. In my business experience, sending notices by first-class mail is not appropriate, that the certified mail, registered mail by return receipt would be appropriate. That's in the next page under notice, just above the signatures.
Is that, I mean, this is something you probably do regularly.
No, this is if we wanna change the contract between us and the contractor, we'd notify them by first-class mail? I don't think so.
I just felt bad if they could do it.
This says you have to do it by mail. If you wanna do it by phone, we need to have that. I'm making notes.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, I, I'm not sure that we need to have, uh, you know, return to mail certification that it was delivered.
It says, the last sentence, "Notice is deemed to have been sent when received at the appropriate address." So, if you don't have a return receipt, you don't have a date.
Uh, yeah, you can get that, you can get that from the post office, even if you don't.
You can go online.
Yeah, you can go online.
Okay.
Get the date.
All right.
Certified mail, you just put in the number and it'll track that.
Okay. All right, you need more? I have more.
Okay.
Section four, the section is residential services, operations and performance. It says in the first paragraph, "Customers may choose from two alternative styles of service." The rate table has nearly a dozen on it. So, something needs to change on which service they pick. It lists bag or can or a ninety-five gallon cart, that's only one of two services in this contract you can pick. Right, to pick one of the two, and these are the two.
Rate page, it's gonna end up being a, an appendix or something for that.
Yeah, it'll have to be.
So, I, I was, um, that, with regard to that particular situation, I was wondering if you have to use the ninety-five gallon or sixty-five gallon, uh, container that you provide? Or can you use your own can, or just set out a bag?
There's a couple places where it says customer owned.
Well, Beryl, what we call the two types of services, if you either have a dumpster or you don't have a dumpster. You have a poly cart or you put it in bags.
Poly carts?
That, that's, that's two types, there's different rates for different amounts you might use in those.
Okay, but it's okay if you put it in a bag out at the curb?
Yes.
And if your neighbor don't have it, already eaten dog, you'll be.
Our ordinance says that it has to be in a container.
I thought so, yeah, so are.
Well, we need to think about that.
But, right.
Because, I mean, with, I mean, maybe not down on the island as much, but up in the, uh, forests and, you know, even the street we live on.
The wildland, yeah.
Poses, poses and raccoons and.
You better not have it out overnight, though, it's true.
And, and then the dogs, the amount of dogs at this one degree.
I don't know, I got.
I think we all leave that language in.
I'm trying to figure it out.
So, and require a can or a cart, poly cart or a can at least?
So, in your rate system, if you have a ninety-five gallon cart, and I only put two bags in it, am I charged the two-bag rate, even though I have a cart?
No, you're charged the ninety-five gallon cart.
Okay, in the, in the contract, it says customer-owned container, it says I can own a thirty-five gallon container, so that's where my two bags would go?
Yes.
Okay. And it says, underneath these two.
It would be, we would tag two thirty-five gallon containers for two bags, two thirty-five gallon cans, or two bags.
Okay. Under the, uh, this, uh, services overflow fee, on the table, I'm guessing it says extra bag, that's an overflow fee? Is that a fifteen gallon bag or a thirty gallon bag?
It is a thirty gallon bag, thirty-five gallon bag.
Thirty-five gallon, okay.
And you're recommending a tax system like they, they do very good?
No, uh, that wouldn't be entirely how you want to write yours, uh, but, uh, you know, I wouldn't recommend it. I, I just recommend a, a flat fee if a customer's a two-bag customer and they set three bags out, we just charge a dollar fee for that extra bag.
Well, okay, but if it's in a cart, haven't you heard that it's got six bags or two?
Yeah, if it's in a cart, there won't be a price or a charge, cart charge, so it don't matter how many bags. If they stuff ten bags in there, they're gonna get charged.
Okay, I, for instance, uh, we were gone a week, came back, no, we weren't gone a week, but we had visitors and we generated more trash. And we, we got a ninety-five, couldn't get it off, sat one on the tight, and did I get charged for that?
You should have gotten charged.
Okay, well, no, I'm not complaining, that, that.
He never even knew this.
I never knew it. I mean, I, I guess I expected that.
That's a, that's a great way to do it, I think.
In practical terms, I bet that if it happens once in a blue moon, they'll probably just throw it in the truck and forget about it. Because it's more trouble than what it's worth to report that, you know, the overage and, and do the extra billing. But if it happens every week, they're gonna do something about it.
We went with the volume-based rates in Berryville, just primarily to encourage the recycling, 'cause technically the recycling is free. And so, you know, what our rate is, is your first bag is your basic rate, and then after that, you have to buy a bag tags, and you've got the choice, you know, buy an extra bag tag or recycle. And we feel like it boosts the, the recycling rates by having volume-based rates. But, you know, like I say, every, every town's different, and, you know, what y'all are looking at here, you, you all are gonna have to work it out, you know, it's just, just a lot of details. Like I say, you're not gonna catch all of them.
On page sixteen, the hours of collection, it says five AM to six, our ordinance says seven AM. So, they have a five AM in the contract?
Uh, well, I should change the ordinance because.
Change the ordinance to five AM?
Because if they don't start at five o'clock in the morning, they won't be done.
No.
Can I jump in?
Sure.
On the next page, under section five V, commercial services, operations and performance, there's service fees for bulky waste and C and D services. What's C and D services?
Construction and demolition, or tearing down a house, boards, concrete, uh.
So, either building a house or tearing one down?
Yes, other than normal household, weekly household trash. Uh, it's, uh, construction material.
All right, Lynn, what else you have?
I'm getting there. Um, it's a change on rate changes in section nine, says for each subsequent year of the term hereof, the contractor may receive rate adjustments upward or downward. I would propose that we change it to will, and then it's tied to the consumer price index. And then at the bottom, it says basis of significant changes in the cost of operations and change such as to limit to revised laws, ordinance, regulations. And put a percentage of cost of fuel change on here, so that when this price of gas from six bucks goes back down to three or two, there'll be a rate change, that they have to change it. And it also allows them to change it upward when it goes up.
Wishful thinking.
Well, it's a proposal in my contract, and I suggested twenty-five percent change, that's significant based on the sentence. How often do you change the rates because of fuel costs?
We've never.
We never have.
Aren't you considering that this climate they're in now?
It is.
No, we, we've always been able to handle those, you know, because we keep reserve, and if it keeps up forever, yeah, we will, but, you know, that, that, that's the advantage we have is being able to stay flexible like that. Is we, we've never had to do it, uh, but, you know, with good business practices, if it happened and there, if something happened and it went to ten dollars a gallon, we'd have to. But it's something that we don't, we don't use, it's just, it's just protects ourselves in, in, you know, very odd circumstances. Back in, what was it, two thousand eight, you know, whenever gas got up to about four or five of dollars, uh, like, we didn't.
We did not raise rates.
We did not do it then.
The only rates we've ever raised was the CPI.
The consumer price index?
Yes, she is.
And did you change that with ever revision of the CPI? Did you change it every time the CPI changed? Uh, no, okay.
I have.
I'll scratch my will.
Yeah, I, I think that may is the best, 'cause they, they may come up with other economies to be able to hold the rates down.
In this same paragraph, the last sentence says, "In addition to the above, the district may petition the city at any time for additional rate and price adjustments." And, and the word "may petition," does that mean that you negotiate it?
Yes, we, we, we would have to ask, you say, it's a tiny town, a landfill suddenly closed, and we had to start going to.
Cherokee.
Cherokee Village or something like that, or, you know, or Cherokee Nation landfill, and that, that would be a major thing, that's just, you know, if we come to you asking for a rate adjustment, we're gonna have to justify it. You know, we're not gonna be able to come in here and say, "Hey, George bought a new truck," you know, we need a, we need a rate increase.
And the board would vote on that also.
And, and the board, our board has to approve it, and you all have to approve it also.
I do? The only other notes I have are on this, uh, exhibit A, that we need to make it clear, um, you know, the definitions tied to the contract, like we talked about, elder is disabled and the low income, so we need to put those titles in there. The inactive, we need to include the vacation and minimum rate, 'cause that's in the contract. And the extra bag is called the overflow fee, so just need to make the table match to the text. And that over extra bag, we need to define, it's a thirty-five gallon bag, so it's not a fifteen gallon bag.
These yards are dumpsters.
And I think they're dumpsters. There may be, there may be, um, a need for some kind of language as to how many times the overflow fee can be applied. Before the person is required to go to the next larger container, 'cause a dollar seventy-five is cheap. You know, under the two-bag service, you're paying eight dollars and thirty-two cents a bag. If you're really generating three bags of garbage every month or every week, you know, a dollar seventy-five for the third bag is pretty cheap, so.
I just stumbled into a basic question I had on the rate sheets. Are they monthly or weekly?
Weekly, monthly.
Monthly.
Monthly?
Yes.
I had that note, change it to monthly.
I think that needs to be mentioned on the rate sheet, they're monthly. And, um, also, what is a yard, two yard, three yard, four yard?
It's a cubic yards, uh, they are containers.
Dumpsters.
Container dumpsters.
Oh, they're dumpsters, okay, dumpster sizes.
Yes.
Are, what, do you have an idea of a percentage of the commercial businesses, uh, that use dumpsters? Are you near dumpsters or get some other dumpsters?
Uh, most commercial, commercial businesses, they go with the, with the, with the exception of Eureka Springs, uh, there's a lot of that in practices. Eureka Springs is also, uh, a hillside, a lot of places couldn't get dumpsters, so they had to specify their contract, like Tim said, each contract is unique for the town. Uh, but most commercial businesses will take.
Well, I guess, I guess my question is, should we require that the dumpsters come from you because? Because if you look at, like, construction sites, there are other-
Yes, their, their dumpsters would need to come from us, yes.
Is that in the thing?
Because we provide them as the service.
So is that in the contract?
Yeah.
Well, they have to be in the ordinance, probably.
It's in the ordinance.
Okay. Okay, that's what we-
And they couldn't get service, the, if they got service anywhere else, they would provide that dumpster, but, I don't know of anybody that dumpster around us, dumpster.
No, I mean, if I had, uh, when we were remodeling our house, they, the person did, uh, did it, caused something, it wasn't a Carroll County dumpster that came. And they parked them out directly.
Okay, any other comments from the council? I'll, I'll open it up to comments from the board. Come up to the mic, introduce yourself.
Starting to three minutes now.
My name is John O'Callaghan, seven Cypress Point, I'm also a member of the Board of Commissioners. And I have a question for Mayor Tim of George, thank you very much for coming. Uh, I understand from our secretaries in the office that we have about sixteen hundred water meters. So if we were to go into this program, uh, about how many, uh, customers do you have now in Holiday Island? And if you had every customer, that'd be sixteen hundred, because that's a water meter, apartment, home, condo. Can you hire enough people to do this? Reason I ask this is you've been kind enough to put a car door dumpster across the street, and when Lawrence Blood was commi- uh, district manager, he and I were always stacking that thing up, because people just come and it's full, so I called your office in Berryville, said, sir, we don't have enough people. We've gotta have people come over, we gotta pay them overtime to dump that car, a car door dumpster. So my question is, I, I really agree with, uh, everybody on the same system, I like this idea. Uh, the building of it is another question, that's probably gonna come up in our meeting, uh, a week from Monday. But how will you be able to hire and buy more trucks and hire enough people to get those done?
Believe it or not, we're not gonna have to hire a bunch more people or buy more trucks. Our trucks are going by these houses we don't serve anyway. So it's just gonna be a matter of, of, of adding those to it. And I will tell you, the last year with the pandemic and the work we have struggled with employees, just like everybody else. George has been on the back of trucks slinging, slinging trash. But we raised our rate, rate was about two dollars an hour, I think. Gotta keep CDL, what's the problem we have? We were hiring CDL drivers for seventeen dollars an hour, get them certified, two weeks later, or more than a day behind, or somewhere like that, so- It has been a challenge keeping personnel, but we've looked at the figures, and George is incredibly on this. It's not gonna, it's not gonna increase our need for equipment or, or personnel that much at all. Because like I say, we're just gonna be, instead of driving by that house, we'll be stopping.
And last question, if I have three minutes now, how many customers do you have now, either for-
We have approximately nine hundred and fifty, uh, now.
Good, thank you.
Time to spare.
Uh, my name's Nathaniel Mann, I own O S H Trash Service. I was wondering, I, I do, like, cleanups, like, I'll go inside rental properties and I'll clean up a house that people moved out of, they leave horrible messes. Um, is Carroll County Solid Waste gonna do something like that? And if not, will I be allowed to come in and do work like that inside the city?
What Carroll County Solid Waste would do is we would set, uh, for the younger, we would set a container, but it would be the responsibility of the owner. Uh, but I'm sure they're paying you to, to do this, to perform this for them. We would provide what they needed.
So you would provide them the help?
We would not provide the employees.
Would I be allowed to come in, but I would have to throw the trash in your dumpster?
Yeah, they wanted to hire you. We would set our dumpster, and they would, they'd be with double trash inside of our dumpster.
All right, another point that I had is, uh, I've got a, a small truck, a light truck. Uh, your, your big trash trucks are blowing my truck by at least twice. And if you guys are worried about the damage done to your roads, the big trash trucks are gonna do a lot more damage than the small trucks. And I, I doubt that you guys are gonna be able to do it all in one day. You said that you didn't want multiple trash trucks running around in multiple days, and, uh, I don't think you guys would be able to-
No, I couldn't do it in one day, but I wouldn't be running down the same street on the other day. I'd, I'd be, my trucks would be on the streets only one time a week. I do run single axle trucks.
Yeah.
And, uh, there's benefits to a single axle truck, and there's benefits to a, a double axle truck. Uh, the single axle truck on chicken sealed roads, which is mainly what Holiday Island is, does the least amount of damage. Now, I'm not gonna say it does less damage than your one-time truck does. But I've also got, uh, upgrades, which is one-time vehicles and pickups, but I try to run on the little, like a White River lane, uh, with the little loops at the end of them, that I try to run down those lanes.
But by doubling your customer base, you're not gonna increase your runs? You're saying that your trucks leave here with so little trash in them currently, that you don't have to really bring more trucks in?
No.
What, that's what he's saying, he's saying we can just stop those masses that we're already going by, we can stop ours.
Yes, but what Mayor Tim's actually saying is, a lot of these houses I'm on, we cover basics, all of Holiday Island now. We're just gonna pick up every customer now. We would, I would add to another day with what I'm doing now, and I would add another truck. To, I'm running five trucks out here right now on Wednesday. I would just need to add a sixth truck and another day. Uh, and I would split it up, uh, some trucks one day, some trucks another day. They would not be running down the same roads the next day, but it would be, it would cover everything, because we're going by everything now with the five trucks.
What size axle trucks are this size?
They are a single axle, we do not run any of, we do not run double axle trucks.
I, I just wanted to ask a few questions, because Holiday Island's like one-third of my customers, and, uh, pretty much basically putting out business, so.
Yes, this, seems like the concern is the accountability of the licensed provider.
Of license.
Ease of, ease of oversight by the committee, and also the trucks. But my questions are quite a few, I'm gonna get to emails actually between y'all. Um, about the vacation rentals, how, how do you know if I'm just a resident and I'm just like, I don't pay for services? I'm just gonna say, you know what, I'm not here. How's that oversight gonna occur?
It's in the contract that Carroll County Solid Waste will be sending a bill for an amount for a minimum charge until you get caught up. They're gonna have a list of the water meters, the people that have water meters attached, and it'll be sending out bills either for service or for not having service.
Right, so I can go with the lowest, have not served, just fill up my backyard.
We will have a code enforcement officer that will be doing some degree of patrolling, looking for the obvious things. I, you know, I, I would say that we probably won't be able to catch everybody all the time that's trying to cheat the system. But we'll, you know, we'll, we'll be better off than what we are today.
Well, it sounds like, you said that there were a dozen properties that have self-identified themselves. It sounds like that's a big part of the, um, oversight, really, is neighbors really looking out for the welfare of the community. So ease of oversight, a proper disposal, he's a licensed, uh, provider. So erasing a small business doesn't seem very rewarding to a person that's working.
Another point that I got is, uh, as far as the cleanups go, a lot of people don't have money. They can't afford to rent a large dumpster and then pay somebody to come in and do the work to clean up. I'm a small company, I've done bartering. I've traded services for a broken down car so I could take it to Big Rock Recycling and get paid. Otherwise, people can't afford to have the yards cleaned up. So you gotta consider that, too. There's people that can't afford, you know, a big trash service. That trash is just gonna sit there because they can't afford Carroll County Solid Waste. So if a small company can't come in and clean that up, that's, that's your problem, that, that trash is gonna sit there. I mean, then you wanna find that person, give him a, a fine for not having that cleaned up? They couldn't afford it in the first place? It just takes a hold.
Yeah, I, I, I hear what you're saying, and I, I don't wanna sound unsympathetic, but there's no place, there's no other city in Carroll County that they could move to and improve their situation if they don't have money. And, uh, and we, we don't want Holiday Island to be the community of last resort for people that can't afford to do anything but throw their garbage in the backyard. And, you know, I, I'm, I'm sorry if that sounds insensitive, but that's, you know-
Are there other cities that have multiple providers and do well?
What?
Are there other cities that have multiple providers?
Not in Carroll County.
I don't know, I don't know.
Well, is there something preventing that?
What?
Is there something preventing having multiple? We use those sayings. Um, I'm Jane O'Hara, twenty-eight Mission Hills Lane, and I'm speaking also for my partner, Jan Wills. She's home with our sick dog. Uh, but, we moved here four years ago. We went with Carroll County waste, because we were told, oh, everybody does it. Fourth of July rolls around, we never received any information about holidays or changed pickups. Didn't put our trash out. We, I've never lived anywhere where they, where they picked up trash on major federal holidays. And, uh, so, we didn't, we called, 'cause we, we, we actually saw the truck. The, the bin was out by the garage. We went over to the truck and said, can you get our trash? No, we can't, we're past you already. We called, we called the office. Oh, well, we don't, you know, we, we don't pick up from the garage. And, uh, we would have rolled it out, but they weren't gonna pick it up, because they passed us up. Uh, so, we called, when we called, called the office, we said, wanna cancel service, we'll get someone else. Uh, and the guy who was on the phone said, well, that's no reason to cancel service. It's supposed to be service. We got Nate. For four years, he has done nothing but the best service. We, some of those windy days, we've had the, the recycle bin blow down the hill. He's gone and picked all that up. Brings the bins back to the, back to the garage for us. Our freezer died in the garage, he was out there the same day to pick it up. And I wanna do business with small business that gives you service. So that's my two cents. And I, I think it's wrong to put people out of business. Just because everyone is, you know, it's always been done like that. It's the problem with this.
It does seem like the main concerns for going with one provider are, are ease of oversight, and accountability of that licensed provider to dispose of the waste property. And he can prove that he does that, I can pre-wire a contract with him. We're not friends, it's not, I mean, George can-
Exactly.
Yes, he is, I would say he's licensed through us. As a district, we can, we do the licensing of the other small haulers. We permit every small hauler.
There, I'm not, you know, there are, I'm sure, you know, reputable people doing business out here that do great service.
So why lose them?
Because we can't have, as, we can't have an ordinance that only, that might only be good for today's circumstance.
He's a licensed provider, proves that he's environmentally responsible.
Well, there are, there are licensed providers, and we're, you know, we're not gonna name names, but there are people licensed right now under Carroll County Solid Waste that have had problems, in the past.
Well, you should name names then, so we, so we're aware of who not to use.
I know my name's not on that list.
I know your name is not on that list.
And I'm not opposed to their business at all, that's not why I'm here, some voice in my opinion. That's, I'm sure you guys do a great business, I'm not bashful at all, if you don't take it that way. It's not about that, it's about someone that does a great job, turns out to be a wonderful person, licensed, environmentally responsible. Why can't he be part of that? You don't need to have a blank contract for oversight.
I don't know how we'd manage it, I don't know how we would-
I'll prove I have a contract.
Well, so, we're gonna, we're gonna have to hire, you want the city to hire people-
You said you were gonna hire code enforcement person for that reason.
The code enforcement person's gonna be dealing with the properties that are already in, in bad shape.
Twelve of them?
Yeah, all on the tapes to deal with that. I, I, I just, you know, you're, you're, you're looking at the short term, this situ- this current situation. I, you know, if, if there's, uh, how many people are, are licensed right now to, to pick up trash in Holiday Island? Ten, twelve?
I don't know about Holiday Island, because I don't know, uh, who all comes in. I did not, you say Morpheus over here, I did not know that till you told me that. We just license them within the district, not, not a certain-
Well, okay, within the district, because if they're licensed within the district, they could pick up here.
We have time, and within the district right now.
And why is my opinion, uh, or my view, short term? What makes it short term?
Because what if, you know, what if today it's five, what if tomorrow it's, uh, nine? And what if, you know, a year from now, it's fourteen?
How many's it been for the last decade? How many's it been for the last decade?
I don't know.
Well, that would be, that would answer your question, I think, about the future.
Not necessarily.
To some degree.
No.
Why not?
I don't-
Why not? Do you think next week, five new trash haulers are gonna get licensed?
One thing I don't think we talked about, that, at least, I, I'm not clear about it. Your licensing ability to these other companies that haul trash in Carroll County. What does that mean? Does that mean that you feel they're reliable, uh, in their ability to adhere to all the Arkansas state regulations?
Okay.
Do you stand behind them?
Tim, because Tim mentioned something to me about his wife, so I, I did not catch all of that. What was the question before?
My question?
Yeah.
Uh, licensing, you're licensing of, uh, companies who haul trash in Carroll County. What does that licensing mean?
Okay, as a district, uh, we are permitted by ADQ. As a district, we have, uh, flow control. We have, as a district, we license any small hauler within our district. We are, we, we do the permitting, we do the licensing, and send all that information to-
What's the criteria?
Yeah, but what, what is it?
Okay, the criteria for that is, uh, really, just to be a small hauler, uh, you have to, uh, you have to have a, a vehicle that, uh, is registered, uh, insured to a certain amount, uh, no leaks, which you're going, you're just good shaped vehicle, uh, all the licensing up to date, insurance up to date on it, and, uh, just fill out a request form to us that you want to become a small hauler.
What are you certifying by your licensing?
What am I, okay, we are-
What are you standing behind?
Yeah, what makes you give them a license, is what she's asking. A guy that has a truck that doesn't have leaks, how do you know it doesn't have leaks?
Well, I don't really.
Exactly, and so, my point is, what, what motivates you? If I wanna come to you and say, hey, man, you know what, I've decided that's what I wanna do? What motivates you? Is it just my application?
You, you, no, you fill out an application, uh, you're actually getting licensed- You, you fail out an application, uh, you're actually getting licenses through Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality. As a district, I, I take care of that for them and send that all to them, but there's really no.
Do you guarantee that they go to a landfill, a proper landfill?
Okay, that's where, and being a district, I've got flow control.
What is that?
Uh, well, that's control of where the trash goes and where the trash is disposed of.
So you would know where.
Osage brings all of his trash to our transfer station.
Okay, so you know where all of his trash is going?
Yes, and, uh, if he, if he takes it out of the district, I've got another where it's going. Uh, if he takes it out of the district, he's gonna pay other district fees to take it out of the district. He's gonna pay my district fees plus their district fees.
So he's probably not gonna do that.
So how long he known it?
Uh, his dad for a long time, your dad, so fifteen years.
Ever had any issues with him?
Never had any issues with him. Well, yeah, my dad might run off my scale or something, but no, issues with them doing something illegal. No, I've never had any issues.
That's all the same, I didn't.
They are small haulers in this, uh, in this district that we, ADQ has had illegal issues.
Oh, sure.
But Osage is not one of them.
So, so you're telling us that, uh, Nate does as good a job of, of taking care of trash as CCSW?
Well, yes, I wouldn't say that he, he doesn't, no. Carroll County Solid Waste, we, we've got twenty-six trucks, we got fifty-seven trucks that we run weekly within Carroll County. Uh, we've got backup trucks, if we got a truck that goes down, we've got a backup truck. One of the criterias in looking at licensing someone is if they've got backup trucks. But as far as what the city should look, look at is, you know, and have they got, if they've got a truck that goes down, have they got another truck that they can run? Uh, it's, you know, the, the city would want to look at that, that's what all the other cities do. Criteria for the city, I've had to be able to show that and, and prove that. When we took over Bearville, we had to be able to show, this is how many trucks we've got and this is how we're gonna take care of you if, if a truck goes down.
Backup trucks. I wanna make, I wanna make a point, Linda, and this, this isn't criticism or skepticism or anything about anybody that's working out here right now. When he says he has flow control, it is totally on the honor system. He is not following, now I'm putting words in your mouth, but you're not following all of these other trucks around to see what they're doing with everything.
No, uh, within, I, I did not follow these other trucks around, no. Within our district, ADQ requires me, if, if something is, if a complaint is called in, if Osage gets a complaint called in from a customer or from someone in the county, ADQ refers that complaint to me because I'm, we're the ones who license through ADQ. And I've got to investigate that. Uh, there was another hauler, that, that's how we found out they was burning trash, doing stuff wrong. AD, uh, ADQ got made aware of, made us aware of it, we found out it was Missouri, so we called the Missouri Department of Environmental Quality and they took care of it. But it was in our district, so we had to open up, we had to start the, uh, start the process. And with the flow control, uh, the only thing, reason I mention that is I've got to be, uh, it's my responsibility as a district to know who is hauling in my district, that they are following regulations and they are, or their permits are up to date, their licensing is up to date. They bring proof of that to me every year when I re-license them and they apply for this license. And, uh, where the trash goes, if they take it, if they take it out of my district, save for, uh, and I can force everything in my district to come to my transfer station, but I, I don't in a lot of cases. Cars out of, uh, they're nationwide. They bought out a small company in Huntsville, uh, Madison County. They pick up, they have their own transfer station, they pick up in Carroll County. They're licensed through us to pick up in Carroll County. I've got their transfer station permit number and all that, because what comes out of Carroll County and goes into another county, I'm re, I'm responsible. If, if something would happen to that and it got to Huntsville, well, it's gonna come back to me just like it would come back to you as a state.
Can I ask about the vehicles? Uh, you talked about, uh, no leaks and, you know, good condition, et cetera. How many of these other companies are you aware of that use just a pickup with a chicken wire cage around it?
There is, uh, three, I believe, in, in Carroll County. And as far as leaks on a truck, I'm, I'm sure if D O P was to crawl under a Carroll County Solid Waste truck, they're gonna find leaks.
No, I understand that, I'm more concerned about the pickups in those cages because you can follow, and I'm not singling out any one, cause I don't know which is which, if there are three companies doing that. But you can follow them up the street and you can count on a couple, three bags. You know, especially when they're getting full, falling off.
But now I notice, I read the ordinance, ordinance that you guys, uh, wrote up, and I noticed in there you had, uh, tarp, you know, be able to entanglement with, with tarps or other maintenance, which is good, good to have in there. The city of Bearville also has that in there. Any load must be tarp before coming through the city of, uh, out of Bearville.
Uh, I'm, you know, I'm, again, I'm, I'm, I'm coming, I'm going back to the same basic point relative to multiple carriers. It, we, we simply are not gonna have the resources as a city to be able to, um, to manage four or five different companies hauling trash, even if, even if they're all great people. Because, uh, we, you know, even if they're all great people today, you know, this ordinance is hopefully going to stand for a hundred years. This ordinance has to cover the future and, you know, so that's, that's one point. Secondly, if we have multiple carriers, how are, how are we going to be assured that everyone in Holiday Island is actually paying for trash pickup?
How are you, how many water meters are paying now?
Sixteen hundred.
And how many water meters, how many water meters have trash service?
I don't know. That's why we're passing this ordinance. It's not sixteen hundred.
Nobody tracks that today. Cause we don't control trash today.
And that's one of the reasons, is so we have some control?
But this ain't counted one, this has been a problem for twenty years at least. And, and, and we had multiple users and everybody's on the honor system to do it, and it ain't worked.
I think the thought is that, uh, Hy-Sid would give a listing from their water system to CCSW and they would map it to their customers that are signed up there and tell us if there's any discrepancies every month. If we have to send that to everybody, people can say they're switching, you know, between carriers. Uh, I'm, you know, I'm dissatisfied with Osage, I'm gonna switch to ACE, or I'm gonna switch to Republic, or I'm gonna switch to CCSW, or I'm gonna leave CCSW and switch to Nate, you know? Um, it just becomes a nightmare, as Dan says, I think, to control that situation.
I was, I was wondering, what exactly is the problem that you're having as far as, you said that, uh, you, you want, you don't want the individual person to be responsible for their own trash? What, what's the problem that Holiday Islands is having with the trash right now as far as not letting the individual person choose which provider they have and having to go with one, one person? Like what, what's the argument that says, is, is there a lot of trash that only Carroll County can take care of? Cause you're mandating like a bill for everybody and yeah, now everybody's gonna have to pay for trash service, but that doesn't mean that everybody's gonna, you know, clean up their yard and, you know, make Holiday Island a nice pretty place, just because.
Chances are, they're paying for trash service, they're going to put their trash out by the curb.
Yeah, well.
If they don't.
Yeah, but what, what's the issue right now that makes you need to go to a?
Twelve toxic waste dumps.
Is that gonna change by going to a single provider?
Is Carroll County Solid Waste gonna clean those up with this contract?
They're working on that one right now.
How does that fix the twelve?
Nobody wants those dumps, that's for sure. You know, it's just, it's just, I, I, the reasoning to go to a single is monopoly.
Yeah, it, I think it's more than monopoly, I mean, it, you know, it's more monopoly.
You can call what you want, but it's what, it's what every city does. I don't know a single city that has four or five different com, companies picking up trash from the city.
Holiday Islands had it for a long time and has done just fine with it.
It hasn't. It hasn't been just fine.
No one has.
I can take you two blocks from here and show you not just fine.
To one of them.
It's horrible.
Is Carroll County gonna clean that up? Is that part of Carroll County's contract to clean up that mess? Or is, what's, what is Carroll County gonna do to fix that problem?
Those twelve?
Those twelve problems, how do they go fix it?
I believe they've already cited.
Three.
Three of them.
Sited three.
But we have to go through the process of going through the legal system.
And you have to hire them to do that? You have to hire them to do that?
That's the job.
No, he, uh, do, Carroll County Solid Waste disposal has two licenses backed by the Arkansas State Attorney General.
Licensed enforcement officer, I am one of them. Uh, we have badges, we got citations, they look for court. And, uh, it's, the only, ADQ, of course, we get small grants for this.
Of course.
But, uh, there's no, we don't get money from the city.
So, so what's gonna change with you get all the contracts for the way your status is right now with your approach to those twelve toxic sites?
Well, nothing really, I'm not gonna have to clean out, uh, the toxic sites, but here's what Madam is trying to say. If you're forced mandatory to have a trash service, then it's less likely that you're gonna have, you're gonna have a site that you need to clean up. And that is a proven fact.
Now, I'm, I'm not disputing that, of course, but people are not as responsible as we all wish they were. We all know that.
And there's gonna, and there's always gonna be illegal sites.
All of it.
That's gonna have to be cleaned up, no matter, no matter what the city does.
Exactly.
And that's why ADQ has licensed officers in every district because it came across and they have, had to find a way to, to take care of this situation. And gave us the authority to take him to court, I work with the local law. Uh, the local law works with me. I have, uh, I have authority, I have authority to, to, uh, if, if I, if I see or I'm, or I am ADQ or Public, calls in and lets us know.
Which is mainly how it happens, isn't it?
Yes, mainly how it happens. Either Public were calling, the Sheriff's Office were calling, or ADQ, they also have people out there looking. Uh, they were calling, I will investigate and, uh, I'm not having to take anybody to court. I talk to the people, they're willing, they're willing to clean it up. So far, I'm not having anybody to court and we get it cleaned up. I don't charge them anything, they've got to pay for the disposal of the trash.
But you said you get grants.
We do get small grants from the ADQ.
That's good.
I wanna ask a question for a second. Uh, it's a little bit more related to, uh, as an individual, if I buy a piece of property that I've gotta do, uh, work on and Nate has, has hauled my trash over here since the beginning, but if I, if I want to, um, if, if I've got, uh, a trailer that I wanna load trash on to haul off and I'm hauling it to his facility as an individual, according to this ordinance, that wouldn't be legal, would it?
There's nothing in our ordinance that speaks to that topic.
You say I can't haul trash.
No, I was talking about a property manager collecting trash from several places and putting it someplace else.
But we're designated in the, the proper location in a dumpster.
He's saying you can't collect from several residents from several addresses and put it to one central. Right, that's, that's what we were talking about earlier.
But as, as an individual, if I want to load my trailer with trash from whatever project I'm working on and I wanna haul it to there, and I understand the problem is, is not everybody hauls it there. They haul it out and dump it somewhere else if they get a chance. But is that, are we, are we trying to fix that by requiring that it has to go in his dumpster? So if I'm gonna remodel the house, I have to have his dumpster there and that's where everything has to go. Uh, you see, I, I'm, and I don't know the answer, I'm just, I, that's why I'm posing this as.
There's no language in the ordinance that would prohibit a personal, person from putting his trash in a trailer and taking it to the dump. There's nothing in the ordinance that says it, no.
That, the other cities that have granted me a contract, that, that helps them, they, the person that dumps the trash and haul it to our office.
But you're saying Airbnb, because they technically don't own the property, would not be allowed to gather trash and then go to a, a central location?
I, I think that, I think, we don't wanna confuse terms here. There's household garbage and refuse and there's construction materials. You know, if you're doing a remodel job and you've got a, got a room and you throw the drywall and two-by-fours on a trailer and haul it to their landfill or to their collection site, uh, I don't think there's anything in the ordinance that would prohibit that.
Okay.
On the other hand, if you were to take all of the bags of trash out of your motel every day and load them on your trailer and take them to the collection site, that would be against the regulation.
Okay.
I think you got all these yard service people running around, you know, doing tree trimming and that. There's, that's, that was still going.
Yeah, this, this contract doesn't cover yard waste whatsoever.
No, that's just an ordinance.
Yard waste cannot be on our system.
I understand that you do have a, you take in yard waste on Wednesdays at the recycling center?
The recycling center doesn't, it, it is open to the county, the city of Eureka Springs does. And our compost is right next to the recycling center in Eureka Springs.
So.
And they take it, but it's the city that operates it.
But anybody can take their yard waste there?
Anyone within the county, yes, I believe they're allowed to take it.
Can we go back to Airbnbs and the yard deals? I, if you're, if we're responsibly picking the trash up in between guests and delivering it to a central dumpster, which we're more than willing to go with Carroll County Dumpster, I, I, I don't see where that should be a problem as long as we're responsibly dumping it in a proper dumpster.
Yeah, I, I didn't, I didn't mean to imply that we were going to prohibit that. It's just something, it, it's something that came up because a lady called me and we.
Which, she's on Zoom and she says you misrepresented their, your conversation with her. I wasn't involved with your conversation, but she is on Zoom and says you misrepresented the conversation.
I, you know, I've, I've talked to one lady about it and I told her that was a, a, a circumstance that we hadn't considered and we'd have to, we'd have to think about it. Now, I do have a concern though, I, I can, you know, and I said before, I have a concern about where those dumpsters are located. You know, if they're, if they're located in a residential area, that could be a problem. You know, if they're not, uh, if they're not.
The thing that happens the most is, is everybody, their dog starts dumping on those, on those dumpsters. And then they overflow like they did the cardboard and everything else.
And ours, and we have that problem where our dumpster's at now. And, and so I wanna do away with that, so we're looking for a different, uh, more central. Since we will be managing the motel, we were going to work outside with Jerry for the dumpster, you know, but I don't think we should just be closed mind that that's totally against the law. Cause I don't believe that's against the law as long as we're dumping out it responsibly.
Actually, I think, I think they make a very good point. Uh, because the, the people that are renting those units leave on various days of the week. And, you know, you really have to, if you're getting regular trash service, you have to put it out on a particular. And, you know, you really have to, if you're getting regular trash service, you have to put it out on a particular day.
A, and you don't wanna come into a property and have somebody else's trash still there.
You know, the owner has to make arrangements for the trash to be collected responsibly.
Right.
Let me be, let me be clear about what this lady's concern was. She didn't wanna get double charged for trash pickup. She didn't wanna get a bill from Carroll County Solid Waste cause she's got a water meter and she's required to sign up for trash service, and then have her VRVO management group, um, you know, take, hold back.
We do not charge her per se trash service. They pay a percentage, we just include a lot of quirks in that percentage.
So, I, I, I don't necessarily have a problem with doing that. I just wanna make sure that, first of all, that it is done responsibly, that that dumpster is located someplace where it's not a nuisance to the people that live in the area, and that it doesn't become overflowed, maybe it has to have a lock on it so that it doesn't become overflowed on the Fourth of July weekend, because everybody knows the dumpster's there. Now, I can tell you that Sunfest and, well, the clubhouse up there had to put theirs behind a lock because, uh, you know, on, on Monday morning, it was full, even if the clubhouse was closed. So.
Seems like those violations still just don't run top. It seems like if they're gonna.
Could be.
Do something wrong, I don't think.
But we've also had problems with, when I was on the Board of Commissioners with the district, we'd have problems with, uh, trash bags being piled up by the, by the pavilion down on the island, or trash piles created at the trailhead for a Leatherwood walking trail.
And then they put trash piles out by the, the dumpster that's only for corrugated carpet.
Right, right, so. If you don't make people pay for their garbage, they're gonna find a way to get rid of it.
In the dark of night.
Yeah. Or in the light of day.
I see some of this is being kind of administrative issue. It's how do you track these places that are making, for instance, Silver Rock Landing probably has six or eight water meters, but there's people coming and going all the time, and their staff takes all the trash away from those units and puts it in a dumpster. So there's gotta be a way to track which water meters' garbage is not to be billed or something yet.
I think that's a good point.
But there's also the ability to use a more of a commercial type, uh, uh, container. Uh, and, and say you've got multiple units that you're dealing with, but you as a, as an Airbnb owner has a container that I pay for ten yards to be, be set on, on, on my property, and then I move all of that trash to that. Well, technically, you can't really charge those ten homeowners an individual fee for each one of it, because it's all coming off of one deal, and I would assume that the cost of that efficiency of pickup would be cheaper to you than for you to travel to each one of those ten properties. So it is, it is all a, an idea we have to work out and work the details out, and we need to have maybe more of a forum that we can have a little more discussion instead of, uh, we don't want, we don't want, we're in favor of what you're doing. I don't, don't misunderstand any of us, but we wanna figure out how everybody can benefit from the, from the program. And, and we wanna make Holiday Island the best that it can be, and we believe it will be.
Yeah, this, the contract and the rate structure was just the first draft. And we've, you know, we've already had a ton of good input, and, you know, we'll come up with a, a better document when, when we're done.
Maybe we can figure out a way to map these commercial-like properties, uh, like the, like Taylor Rock Landing, like the motel, and some of these Airbnbs to, uh, if they, if they wanna arrange their service that way, map a certain dumpster to a group of properties.
And there's also, also the possibility, and I, I, I know what you're saying, that there's also the possibility on those properties, maybe, maybe that dumpster is required to be put into a corral. Okay, so it's not wide open in, in a residential area. On my corner of my property in my residential area, there may be a trash corral with a privacy fence around it, so that we're not driving through there and looking at everybody's trash piled up. So I think there's ways to, to figure those, those systems out, but.
And let me throw one more fly in the ointment here. On, on top of any ordinance that we may write, we also have to consider the unit covenants, which may prohibit a lot of these good things that we're talking about from being possible too. And, um, I know that unit covenants aren't very well enforced. However, I am seeking a legal opinion as to what liability the city might have if we pass an ordinance that allows for something that is in violation of the unit covenant. Because the unit covenant came first, and the Supreme Court has already ruled that unit covenants have value, and if the government does, if the city does anything to, um, you know, to diminish that unit covenant, then that's an illegal extraction of value. So we gotta be careful that we don't come up with a plan that, you know, that can make create another problem. So, a lot of things to consider. Well, I think I'm gonna cut off discussion now on the, on the contract and the rate schedule, and move on to the next item on the agenda, which is considering the ordinance that would, um, that would single source the, um.
It's the top of page two, reserves the right to award an exclusive franchise.
I was just trying to find the ordinance.
Okay.
Alright, so the next thing on the ordinance, on the agenda, is consideration of ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-zero-zero-four. An ordinance providing for the regulation of solid waste and recycling collection and disposal at the corporate limits of Holiday Island. Do I have a motion to put this, do I have a motion to approve? The way we're gonna do this is, I ask for a motion to approve the ordinance. Somebody will second it, if someone seconds it, then we will read the ordinance and, and open it, open the floor for discussion before we take the vote. And I'll open it again first to the council members and then to the floor. So, um, Wes. I don't know how long it would take to read all.
Can we read it by title only?
Since it's so contentious, do you think we should? Has it, has this been posted on the website? It has been. Mick, are you making a motion to?
I would, I would move that we, uh, move to pass, do I say move to pass it? And then that allows discussion?
Uh, I think.
Or put it on the floor?
Now, let's, let's make two motions, one motion to, to, to read it by title only, and then another motion to approve.
I'll move that we read ordinance twenty-oh, two-oh-two-two-dash-oh-oh-four, uh, by title only.
Second.
Linda made the motion to read the ordinance, twenty-two-two-oh-oh-four by title only. Jerry seconded it, any discussion? Let's take a roll call vote on that.
Okay, Councilmember Gumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Rains?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitman?
Aye.
Call in the paper.
Thank, motion to read it by title only is passed, now do I have a motion to pass the ordinance?
I'll move that we pass ordinance number two-oh-two-two-dash-oh-oh-four.
Linda made a motion to pass the ordinance, do I have a second?
That's taken.
Ken seconded it, any discussion?
I had several points that I've written down, that's moved on through this evening.
Okay.
At the, uh, middle of page two, approved container. It says provided by the contractor. The contract that we were talking about earlier says that you can have privately owned containers.
Which page you on?
In the middle of page two, and the, under section two definition, approved container.
So are you wanting to add that at the end of the sentence?
Well, it's contrary to what's in the contract, so I need to resolve the contrariness.
They didn't, the contract didn't have two sizes.
Cause, cause for low volume customers, they don't need a ninety-six or sixty-five gallon polycar.
The contract talks about a thirty-five gallon owned car.
You could have your own thirty gallon can, thirty-five gallon can.
Right. It's at the top of page three, it says in the contract, a trash can or solid waste storage container with a tight fitting lid that does not exceed thirty-five gallons in volume capacity, nor fifty pounds in weight when full, that is used and owned by a residential solid waste customer for the purposes of containing solid waste.
So why don't we add, or a thirty-five gallon container with a tight fitting lid?
Well.
Owned by the customer.
I mean, maybe I want a sixty-five gallon container.
Well, it says or other approved size on both lines, so I, I think that opens the door to any size we put in the contract. Provided by the contractor is what conflicts with the, uh.
The agreement.
With the contract, so. So if we just say, if we scratch provided by the contractor and scratch wheels so that it reads, uh, or other approved size with a lid for the collection of acceptable solid waste and recycling.
So.
But that doesn't refer to private label owners?
I don't think we have to worry about whether it's.
Who approves it? Carroll County has to approve what, what they buy? We wanna set a minimum size?
I don't know, we need to be, we need to be back to the same.
Well, you could sort of say as specified, or, or any container as specified by the contractor.
Well, the concern by striking that language I have is that for Carroll County Solid Waste to be effective in their collection, they need a ninety-six gallon or a sixty-five gallon container that fits their equipment. So that part needs to stay there, and we need to add that we can allow privately owned containers. We don't wanna go to Walmart and buy a sixty-five gallon container and expect them to have to use it. Because of their, the way they attach and dump.
So what's, what's your wording?
At the very end, change the period to a comma, for privately owned thirty-five gallon container.
Yeah, cause they, they can do that.
Right, that's what they do, they open it up and extract the bags.
I have a quick question, I'll quit if I can.
Um, who puts up a question? They allow now, well, my neighbor uses, it's not thirty-five gallons.
Right.
It's like a twenty or eighteen gallon. You know, it's man in the wild.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's twice as much as thirty-five is.
It's two kitchen garbage bag size or three.
I don't wanna have to have a sixty-five gallon car for my thirteen gallon.
Exactly, exactly.
I'm sure a lot of people do have small volumes.
I got a basic problem with the question, the first page there down at the bottom, where they're talking about if I own a house and I rent it to somebody, I'm liable for the trash pickup.
You are, uh.
But the meter's not in my name, it's in the renter's name.
But ultimately, your responsibility. If Carroll County Solid Waste saved somebody, they saved the property owner, not the renter.
Their end is paying the water bill.
Dan, are we going through this in a, a three reading process?
No, there's an emergency clause I knew, so.
Alright.
This gentleman, I think he wants to.
Now, we can scratch the emergency clause and move on.
No, prove it.
I don't see why we got an emergency clause. Can, can we go off, uh, agenda, just let him ask one question?
He just has a question he wants to ask.
I wanna, I wanted to know when the contract would come into effect, so I wanted to know how long I had in Holiday Island.
Um, we were targeting July first as the implementation.
I've never been to one of these meetings, I can, you know.
Oh, that's okay.
Thank you.
Um, I'm still working on the approved container.
You're writing an awful lot.
I'm not writing anything, because I started to write and then Ken started talking about that, and. So, um, approved container means. Lynn, read it to me again, what you want.
I'm gonna change my mind. Means it's ninety-five gallon container or other approved size provided by the solid waste provider. Hmm, that needs probably changed, probably the solid waste contractor, right? Not provider? I think let's change that to contractor.
Well, you can use a contractor.
And a sixty-five gallon container provided by the contractor. Maybe comma, or privately owned thirty-five gallon container, comma, with wheels and a lid for the collection of acceptable solid waste and recycling.
Okay, well, that's almost what I had, so.
Okay. The horse doesn't have wheels.
They know. Maybe move then, if, if the wheels isn't gonna be needed for the privately owned, move that little phrase to after with wheels, comma.
Yeah, in fact, that's what I did.
Alright.
I did almost exactly that, so. Okay. I got that. Now, what was the next comment?
At the top of that page, it talks about a four percent franchise fee, as well as in the definition. I'm not in favor of assigning a fee for franchising or collection, because I, common sense, they'll pass that on to the homeowner.
It's, it's not assigned, it says not to.
It's not to see four percent, it's not.
It says not.
It just, it just says that the city reserves the right to impose a franchise fee. It doesn't impose a franchise fee.
Okay, because this contract has nothing in it about a franchise fee, so at this point, we're not considering one.
We're not considering one, because we're, we're, we, we are not assuming any of the responsibility for billing or anything like that, so there's no cost to us.
Okay.
But that would be the city council's decision, if you wanted to.
Okay. Alright, at the end of that same paragraph, it starts with shall be payable. Should be according to terms, not accounting to terms? Shall be payable according to terms, that fourth.
I don't know, that's the word that the lawyer.
Well, the lawyer's law.
Of course it's according, yes.
I've never heard of a payable accounting to terms.
No, it doesn't make sense.
I've never heard that phrase before.
It's gotta be according.
Okay, I got that.
Okay.
Spell check, Mike.
That's the problem with spell check, it doesn't tell you if you used the wrong word.
If it's a word spelled correctly. Okay, and this is skipping ahead, section thirteen on page five. I know. The second sentence, the contractor will also publish a list. And I'm wondering, I have made myself a note, shouldn't the city be controlling that list, being an ordinance? So they just can't change the list willy-nilly?
And I had the comment, shouldn't it be covered in the contract too?
Sure. Because there's already a list of items that are not allowed and are allowed in the excluded solid waste section of the contract, and the solid waste.
You really think that's.
I don't know.
Such a serious thing that we would have to control that, that we would have to have the list of good, you know, acceptable and not acceptable be part of the ordinance?
Well, I think that's an argument for the, all of the single provider, I mean, they, they know what the.
Okay, I just asked a question.
I don't think I want to have to change the ordinance every time they decide that they, uh, can't pick up radios anymore or something.
Okay, and then during our discussion, I, I made note at the top that we need language in this ordinance that requires contractor to have sufficient equipment to ensure service, that was talked about several times, do we need something like that?
If.
In the art ordinance or in the contract? That they have the sufficient equipment to ensure service?
I, I believe.
It's listed in the contract or the simplest?
Well, I, I think that the, the contract basically, I, I believe the contract has a clause in it that says that we can get out of the contract if they fail with the form.
Okay, it does, it does have that. And then, do we need to cover the subject that was last addressed from the public, that needing language to cover VRVO trash being consolidated into a dumpster located in a specific location surrounded by a corral to shield from view from the street or other property owners? Does that need to be in the ordinance? We're talking about the city's ordinance for controlling trash.
I'm gonna say, probably.
I think you do.
It sounds like a good idea.
Where are you putting that?
I don't know where, I just made a note at the bottom of page two, so I lose track of it.
That is a significant enough change that I believe we're gonna end up tabled this for tonight. And revisiting it, and we can call it a special meeting in two weeks if we want to, to, uh.
There's nothing in it again?
I'm, uh, just not declaring an emergency, something, have some, right ahead.
Strike the emergency clause, we can do that, I, I didn't ask for the emergency clause.
I don't know why we need to.
It was really weird that he wanted to put it in, I thought.
Uh-huh.
It was kinda weird that he wanted to put it in.
I get the impression from talking to Justin, that in other cities, every ordinance has the emergency clause, that's just the way they do it.
Well, I wonder why it was in there.
No, the concern would be the timing, that if it was thirty, ninety days, and then it doesn't really take an effect for thirty days further. You know, it just, it puts it out past July.
Yeah.
Cause we're already March.
Well, I mean, we could.
We can have readings, right?
I understand, as far as the readings don't have to be thirty days apart, but.
Right, and we could, we could vote to suspend the second reading and pass it on the third reading, too. We've done that in the past. So, we need to add a paragraph.
Even if it's copy, Floyd.
It might go under section six, containers.
I mean, if it's, we're talking about the Airbnbs and whatnot, that's what's on the table now.
That's, that's where the discussion came from, from the public.
Okay. I've always intended that if you've got, you know, VRVO, this, you know, vacation rental by owner, which really not, cause they.
Right.
They've got this scour and, uh, Eureka that manages, I don't know, dozens.
Right.
And, and should that not be under commercial waste?
Well.
They, they just have a contract with him to do the clean out, cleanups of all the apartments.
No, you, you, you rent, you can rent it through his website.
Well, yeah, yeah, he does that.
It's just a method of how you get it reserved, but.
They also.
You can sell short-term rentals.
He's actually managing the property for me, yeah.
It just goes under the term of short-term rentals in general.
Yeah, but you got a lot of them that, you know, have somebody, all they do is clean it up.
Yeah.
And, and now there are people that manage it themselves, VRVOs. So they don't have a management company taking care of the trash.
They make us have a cleaner.
They just have cleaners. Clearers come in and take the trash.
Yeah.
They're gonna, they're gonna get contacted, then they have, they have a, a contract. Every, eventually, every water meter has to be accounted for, either through a consolidation outfit like this, or individual contracting or something.
You're gonna have a hard time keeping track of whether they get, you know, whether they've all got service.
We don't do it, CC, CC, Carol County does that, Solid Waste Service does that, in the contract.
Not if you're gonna bundle these up and let them handle their own waste, and that.
That was, that was the point I tried to make, and it kind of fell on deaf ears.
You're not.
You know, I can.
Carol County Solid Waste is gonna be involved if you.
Well, if they're gonna provide the dump, central dumpster for those bad situation, then we would have to make sure they knew that this meter, this meter, this meter, and this meter were attached to the central dumpster.
That you go to the V. You go with the VRB or any of them, whatever, you gotta have them going in and out.
Changes to that over time.
My thought would be, when you get into these, there is no such thing that is inactive status.
No, not in, not in the VRBO.
To pay the rent year-round, period.
Right, if it's a VRBO, short-term rental, sure, there, there'd be a, there should be a service attached to that property, one way or another.
But, but all, all part-time residents spell rent, they're all selling their own. Probably not.
I would think if you're, if you did, if you're, uh, by, managed by a property or by a company, that, uh, you can't escape. We need control over that.
The owners still are ultimately responsible.
You're not gonna be able to control it.
Coming up with a way of managing it, that, that was my main concern, and, but like I said, it, it fell on deaf ears, cause nobody wanted to hear that, that it would be difficult trying to keep up with five companies. Can you imagine if you had five companies, and each one of those five companies had VRVO customers? And, uh, because I'm pretty darn sure that, that, uh, one, one of our visitors here today was using Republic for that very thing. So, of course, she said they'd go with Carol County if they had to, but it's just a.
To address this, we have commercial waste defined, and it talks specifically to this case. Generated by a commercial or industrial establishment, or a multiple residential unit business or combined units of businesses that streamline waste into consolidated containers. It's defined, that, that talks about that situation.
It's in the ordinance.
It's in the ordinance, and then, before that, in the paragraph before, it says, any person refusing or failing to pay any charges, blah, 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 including both the failure to pay for residential solid and recycling, or the failure, failure to pay for the collection of commercial waste shall be guilty of a violation. So, those people are commercial, and if they put it in a dumpster, there's gonna be provided by Carol County Solid Waste, if that's who we use, and they'll have to make sure they have a contract to get it used and dumped. So I think it's covered, except for where it's placed.
Except you don't know how many units, the, the units are doing all the time or not. It doesn't matter, like, where I, I had my condo right down here, it was four, four condos. We were all over water meter, we had separate trash pickup, I was only here, you know, once, once or twice every month. And, and those other people, if they rented their, mine wasn't a rent, but if they had a renter or a nightly rental, they dumped that trash overflow into my dumpster. Every time I came back, it was full, every time, without fail.
Did you say you were on the same water meter, or separate?
No, separate water meters, and I, I paid, uh, you know, didn't use much water, cause we weren't there, but, you know, four or five days every month.
But because you had limited space to put the dumpster, it was simple.
Well, they got a dumpster now, they, they have a dumpster now, because, uh, I was the condo association president, and we decided to end that for that very reason. But, we, you know, the condo association required that they get a dumpster. So I think we got, almost anything that's multi-units, needs a dumpster needs to be required, and.
Okay, well, for tonight's meeting, then, we'll make a note that it needs to be, provisions for that need to be added to the, uh, needed to be added to the ordinance, and consequently, I think it would be an appropriate call for a vote tonight on, uh, on the ordinance, so I'll entertain a motion to table this until the next meeting.
Can I bring up one more thing before we table it, cause it's pertinent to what Jerry just said? There is a discrepancy on page, between page three, under the definition of residential unit, that's page three, and then on page five, where it talks about one A residential customers. So residential unit says, a group of persons comprising not more than four families or units, not more than, meaning it's three or less.
No, not more than four, it's five or four.
Four or less.
Right, so that's four or less, when you go to page five, it says, uh, multifamily housing units consisting of four or more.
It should be five.
It would, should be five or more, I think.
In what paragraph is that?
That's one A, on, on page five.
Residential customers. Right here, Dan.
I'm not looking.
Right here, Dan.
Page five, right there?
Yep.
Page five.
Five, where did you get five? Then drop another one, it's a small A.
Last, last line on A.
Oh, okay, I got you.
It should be five.
I think it should be five or more.
Okay.
So now you're gonna table it.
Okay, now I'll entertain a motion to table the ordinance until the next, uh, next meeting.
So.
Jerry made a motion to table the ordinance until the next, uh, meeting, do I have a second?
I'll second.
We need a roll call vote on that? Sure.
Councilmember Gumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Melz?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
I have his name, so.
One thought that I have had on this, I question this, being an administrative matter, it's not pertaining to the city really, it's been, uh, Carol County Solid Waste, but is inactive status needed?
I wonder what is, where's the convention?
When we, in Iowa, we have road water in our farmhouse in Iowa. We are there two, three times a year, ten days at a time. We're paying sixty-three dollars per month for water, and there is no such thing as in active or vacation.
You're not using it.
You can pay to have them disconnected in the fall, but pay sixty-three dollars a month all winter.
Just cause you're there, you're on their books, obviously?
Well, I suppose.
You have a meter, even if it's inactive.
You have a meter, you're right.
I think, I think one of, one of the points that we don't want to overlook is, when we get into negotiating the rate structure and everything, every one of those line items on that rate structure needs some definition. What are we talking about when we say, you know, you know?
What does inactive mean?
Inactive, what does inactive mean? Because if, if you're gonna be gone for a month, you're not inactive, if you're gonna be gone for three months, you're not gonna be inactive. In, uh, turn the clock back four years, um, grandma died, and, uh, and now the house is standing empty, and it took us five years to sell it, um, that's pretty inactive. So I think that there needs to be a, a status of inactive, but it's not intended to allow somebody to, uh, cause even on the, the water meter thing, we made it, you know, on the board, when I was on the DOC, and I think you too, we made it a little bit more punitive to turn your water off and turn it back on again.
I was just gonna ask, do you know how much we charge for an off and an on? I don't, it's probably in the regulations.
I'm sure.
Somewhere, Dan, I read in here that inactive was the bill that they get if they don't have a service and they have an active water meter. So it starts taking the dollar value and assign to that account, it's in here someplace, I just can't find it. So if they have an active water meter, they get charged something. Okay, so you're paying for nothing if you're not using it.
Well, I would just try to.
I see.
Dan?
Think about what is, what would change for Carol County Solid Waste to be taken.
Six bucks a month.
Meeters between active and inactive, because people are gone for a month or something.
Yeah.
Well, I think it, they definitely have to have the water turned off before we make it inactive.
And that, you know, that low, well, they call it the, was it the low income slash elderly, or whatever?
I think that was a different one.
Ten bucks a month?
That's a different line.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I know that there's people in Holiday Island that kind of live.
How do you determine it?
You know, social security deposit to social security deposit, but ten bucks a month? And if you, if you can't afford ten dollars a month, maybe you're living in the wrong town.
Dan, just one other point, uh, are, are we gonna have a clearer idea before we take this up at the next meeting? Hiccup's role in building, because I kind of got nervous when Ken Brown's talked about them taking it up.
I've been, I've been talking to Danny about it, um, there was, there, there were, there were two things that I asked the district for as far as helping out with this. One was, if somebody doesn't pay for trash pickup, shut the water meter off. That's what other cities do, cause they have control of the water department. And it's on the trash bill, I mean, the trash bill on the water bill.
Is that legal?
Huh?
Is that legal?
In cities that.
The cities do it all the time.
But usually the cities provide the trash collection service.
I know, but it sounds kind of, uh.
I'll bet, I'll bet every city in Holiday, in, uh, in Carol County, I bet Green Forest, Berryville, and Eureka Springs have it right up in the water bill, and if they don't pay it, if they don't pay their water bill.
I got the impression that somebody is using Carol County waste to do the bill.
Well, that's for the rural customers.
Just rural.
They have a lot of rural customers.
Our contract says that they will be doing the bill, that's what this contract says.
So, Hiccup will just be providing.
And listed active water meters.
Yeah.
The other, they, they said no to shutting off the water, because the, uh, because the the, the water system was paid for through assessed benefits, and so you're basically, if you shut the water off because they didn't pay for some totally unrelated service, you're depriving them of, you know, of the right they purchased, basically, it's partly their water system service. So, so I, you know, I thought that was a long shot anyway, so that, that isn't gonna happen. But I haven't heard any negative, uh, response to them providing us with a list of addresses that have a water meter.
Are they going to give monthly changes because of?
It almost have to be monthly.
Ownership chart, please. Ownership changes?
Yeah.
So, um, I, I...
The HISA may ask us for some reimbursement for a certain amount of office support.
No.
Can I ask a question?
Um, we, we need to vote on the motion to table first, so...
I'll move that we table.
I thought we did that.
We did, we did. We voted, but I'm...
We took a roll call.
Right. So the motion is, the mo, the motion is table, all right. Marvin?
Are there any, uh, privacy concerns on one organization turning it over to others? Because I know with the chamber, I've been asked many times for a membership license and that would be invasion of privacy if I did that. And I know in, uh, in promoting our bass tournaments and so forth, we went through the proper process to be able to include fishermen who leased the dock that is pretty much devoted to fishermen. We could not do that on our own and I just didn't want to have to see the city have privacy issues.
To me, to me, the determining factor is if the city were to, uh, to submit a FOIA request for that information from the district, would they have to provide it to us? And I think the answer is yes. It's a public record.
You just said the key word to me and that's FOIA, because I did not hear that before.
Now, that doesn't mean that they have to give it to us.
Right.
Unless we request it, you know, if we request it in a FOIA request, they have to give it to us.
Right.
I don't think they have to give it to a private citizen though. I think it's, it's been shown that the, the data, water data is private and it's not subject to FOIA.
Well, most of those laws wish to prevent, uh, people from buying those lists.
Probably so, yeah.
But the fact that...
You check with Justin, I bet he'll tell you that, uh, that, that they cannot give out that data under FOIA.
I think they can.
And Mark, who, who told you that the chamber did not give out?
All we're, all we're asking for is the address and the meter. We're not asking for their name.
Maybe if all you need is the address and not the name, that would work. But, but when you associate a name and an address, that's...
I don't, I don't think so, because I, unless things have changed, working for an insurance company, I've made the request of that as a public record and they've given it to me.
They may give it to Hi-Haw, name and address.
Yeah, they won't give it to Hi-Haw. They've requested it multiple times from local cabins and stuff.
Well, maybe it's not different. And they won't, you're right, they won't give it to Hi-Haw because we've...
Did, did Hi-Haw FOIA it or did they just ask?
Or just ask for it.
Yeah. If you just ask, they can say no. They can say no to us, you know?
That's, that's my concern.
I'm not going to...
Heck, you could get the name and address of everybody out there through Act Data Scout if you're willing to pay them.
I, I will ask the question whether it's legal or not.
You can't find it for the water meter.
As, I, uh, but I believe it would be more appropriate for me to ask the district, to ask their lawyer if it's legal or not, and then we'll know.
But I think it, it should be perfectly legal to transfer it to the city. I mean, if we, if we own the water district, we'd get access to it.
Own the water district.
But yeah, ask, ask Justin what the, what the legal ramifications of that, keeping that information private versus public.
That's not, that's not...
Well, as soon as we have the list, then it could be FOIA, FOIA from the city.
If it's allowed, if it's not.
All right, the next thing on the agenda is resolution twenty-two dash zero-zero-three, rental for a sheriff's substation in the Business Park. I'll entertain a motion that we pass resolution twenty-two dash zero-zero-three. Do I have a motion?
Um, we don't have the contract yet.
That's my concern.
We're going to have a contract.
Well, we need to have, we've been doing this for about six months now.
If we don't, if we don't strike while this iron is hot, then...
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to put it on the floor.
Well, that's not an ordinance. We have to...
We got to have a discussion before we put it on the floor.
I'll say, you make a motion, pass it, and then you have discussion.
The new and improved process is to make a motion to pass it and then get a second and then have discussion and then have the vote.
Then make a motion to pass the resolution two-zero-two-two-zero-three.
I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion to pass resolution twenty-two dash zero-zero-three and, uh, can make the motion, then second it. Now, we'll read the resolution and then open it for discussion. The resolution authorizing rental space for sheriff's substation for the city of Holiday Island, whereas the city of Holiday Island wishes to maintain a substation for the use of the Carroll County Sheriff's Department deputies when controlling Holiday Island. And whereas the Holiday Island Suburban Improvement District will share on a fifty percent basis the cost of providing that space. And whereas suitable space of approximately eight hundred square feet is available at five Forest Park Cabinet, Unit D, now beethed result by the City Council of the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas, that the City Council for the City of Holiday Island authorizes the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with GKS Properties and the Holiday Island Suburban Improvement District for the lease of five Forest Park Avenue, Unit D, from GKS Properties for the sum of three hundred dollars per month in cash payable honor before the first day of each month. The city and the district will be billed separately for each hundred, each for a hundred and fifty dollars. The rent includes utilities passed and approved by the City Council. Of Holiday Island, Arkansas, on this date of three fifteen, twenty twenty-two. I'll now open the floor for discussion.
When would this start?
March fourteenth.
I just read it.
That's yesterday.
I want to see how we can do this before we get the damn contract.
Well, the lease agreement was written up yesterday.
So when would it start, Dan?
I guess the first of the month.
The lease agreement says fourteen March. It is written.
Well...
I think it's safe to assume that the first monthly payment is going to be due, um, on or before the first of April. Hundred and fifty bucks. If not, Carroll County will be evicted from, the sheriff's department will be evicted from the office they're occupying right now and Aaron will have to start driving back and forth to Berryville every day to file his reports.
Is that because Carroll County JPs have decided not to continue the rental?
No, it's because the rent has been free forever. And now if they want to stay there, the rent is going to be six hundred dollars. And the sheriff said he is not going to pay six hundred dollars. So, um, we found another location in the park, different building, different owner, for three hundred dollars a month, including utilities.
Can I ask a question about, about the, uh, lease itself?
The lease was written by the city attorney for P Ridge, Arkansas.
Well, I know, but the only, only question is in paragraph eleven, I know it's, we're a co-leasee or lessee and we're going to demify the lessor and we do not have a general liability policy, but HISA does. And we're not an additional insurer by their policy.
Which paragraph are you in?
Eleven. Where is it?
Paragraph eleven, last page. Paragraph eleven, last page.
No, I say, where's the, where's the building? Where's the building?
It's up, five Forest Parks, it's where...
It's, it's up on top of the hill.
Where the Hot Box Pizza, it's the building that Hot Box Pizza...
I don't, I don't know that, that our municipal immunity would apply to this, because that's an assumed contract, or an assumed liability, assuming the liability is somebody else. The municipal league would defend us, but I don't think they're going to defend them.
Yeah, why would you hold harmless the, the person that owns the property if they failed to make payment properly?
That's common.
It is?
Yeah.
Then what are you arguing about?
That we don't have a general, we're holding somebody harmless, but we don't have a policy to cover that.
Oh, that we wouldn't have anything to cover it?
What would we cover the lessor with if it happened? They have a general liability policy. This is an insured contract. An insured contract is covered under a general liability policy and would depend the lessor.
And many, our municipal league stuff doesn't cover us for...
I wouldn't think so.
Any property that we occupy or...
Us, but not the lessor. We're asking, we'd be asking the municipal league to provide a defense for somebody other than a municipality.
A private business.
A private business. Now, they're actually, I mean, it may never come up because they'd be covered under HISA's general liability policy.
So we'd have to take out a liability policy, I guess, yes.
For this?
Yes.
Can't we just...
Have to talk to the league, I guess.
Is there not, is there not just a way to, for HISA to assume that, but not us?
Well...
Well, because they've got coverage for it and it's not anything, it's not costing them an additional, that's built into a general liability policy.
All they have to do is name the market, right?
They don't even have to name it, they just have to have a contract agreeing to do that. And then it's a, if you look under the exception for contractual liability and general liability policy, it says, assumed under a side-tack agreement or insured contract, a lease is an insured contract like that.
So by HISA signing on line nineteen, that doesn't tie them to that?
It does.
Okay.
But it also ties us, we're a co-leasee.
Okay.
If I sign it too, then I'm tying it to the same.
So they're fine.
They do that, right?
While the lessie is acting to purchase primary commercial general liability... This is common language, I don't have any problem with the language itself, I'm just saying technically, we're not, we're not protected, they are. Yeah. We don't have a commercial... Mr. Mayor, all right.
So could we fix this agreement by suggesting they change the VC one?
Yes.
VC two?
Exactly.
And then put VC one back in paragraph one so that we're not in that paragraph?
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Okay.
Just lessie one agrees to a demify, lessie two does not, if, if, if that's going to be permitted. I, it's not a big, big issue, I mean, it's not very likely to happen, but, okay.
Lessie, lessie number one and number two.
I strongly encourage you to talk to insurance people that do the general liability. If somebody comes in, um, with some type attached to the city and you're not named as an additional insured, uh, you could be liable. Will it happen? Who knows?
Well...
But we live in a litigious society and if there is a cautious way to prevent it, I would urge you to consider that.
Well, I, well, I, but a liability, you don't have to name an additional insurer, they're not an additional insurer.
My, my experience was you should, I'm just passing that on.
Well, not, not, not going to argue with you, but that's what I did for thirty-five years. That's why I know what the policy says, because that, I was a general liability supervisor. And, and that's why I'm concerned about it.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's basically, uh, a, that's a showstopper for us approving this tonight.
Well, I don't know, can we just, of course...
We, we can't change this contract.
Right.
The lessor wrote this contract.
Uh, oh.
And he's the city attorney for the city of P Ridge, so, as well as being a landlord.
Do we care?
So I think he, he probably knows what he's doing.
Do we care if Aaron has to drive back and forth to Berryville to file his report until we have a contract with him?
Well, I, my concern is losing the property.
Yeah.
May I ask a...
That's my, my issue is, I, I just, I want him to strike while Aaron is on...
You've been becking for it all year.
I already have some issues with that.
In today's world with computers, and, and I don't have an understanding of how the sheriff's office works, so, um, but if he's driving simply to file a report, is there not some way that some arrangement can be made to send those through the cyber world?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't have any idea how the sheriff's office works, so I don't want to sound light with that, but if that's the reason, can he not come up to the city office and use the computer or to HISA's office?
It...
Or, or do it in his car? Don't they have computers in their car?
All I can, all I can tell you is there's no internet in the office they're using right now, so they're doing, they're doing a hard copy somehow.
Can, can we, can we just pass a resolution to pay HISA a hundred and fifty dollars a month for use of this and then they sign the contract alone?
That's, that's what I thought we had before I actually read this, I...
I mean, that would be, then I'm, then I'm not worried at all.
Yeah. There, there's probably a couple of solutions, the, the...
Well, I mean, we don't have a contract with them now, so it... No, but we, we don't have to have a contract with them if we want to give HISA a hundred and fifty dollars for use of, of this, just on a resolution, not sign a contract.
Sure. To me, it was, you know, I, I agree, in today's world, you know, work from home and everything, it's crazy to think that they'd have to be on the road an hour a day just to file a report. However, um, to me, um, having a patrol car sitting out there in the parking lot right by the highway, um, all, all, you know, the time when people are driving through is worth a hundred and fifty dollars a month, just so that people know that we have police protection in Holiday Island. So, now we could buy an old car and just paint sheriff's department on it, park it there.
How much would they have to pay for its costs?
The resolution doesn't speak...
If we didn't buy insurance just for that, we'd have to buy a general liability policy, which we don't need because we're covered by the municipal league.
Mr. Mayor, the resolution doesn't speak to signing the contract.
It'd be a lot more than that.
It just speaks to spending a hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, right. That's my point. Can we spend a hundred and fifty dollars?
The resolution doesn't say it proves you to sign the contract.
Well, it says, enter a deal with the lease agreement.
That's sending it out.
Oh, all right, we've got to fix that.
No, but why, I, I still, is, is it not for...
No. Question, in, in the lease agreement, shouldn't the top left-hand corner say County of Carroll? And then of County of...
I can imagine why. Vicky, vicky, vicky. I still go back to my original point, can we not draft a resolution to agree to, to give HISA...
Let me go back, let me talk to Danny tomorrow morning and see if we can rewrite the contract to where they, they lease the pro, the, the space and we reimburse them.
There you go.
That's a good one.
That's the, that's the way I started out thinking.
That's the way to do it. But can we pass a resolution tonight that we're in agreement that will give the Sid a hundred and fifty dollars a month toward it? And then, then you don't have to come back to us at all, because if Danny's willing to sign the contract without us, we've already passed a resolution that in that case we'll give him a hundred and fifty dollars.
And the lease is only, he only requires him to be involved.
Right, exactly, not us.
So change the wording of the resolution that we would...
So change the wording of the resolution that we would reimburse?
That were an agreement to reimburse?
HISA for half of the price.
Half of the cost, yeah, and leave it at that. Dan doesn't have to sign anything, we don't have to worry about the liability, he can worry about it with travelers.
Just change the wording of that.
I'm just, just a suggestion, I'm getting, it's getting late, so I may not make any sense anymore.
So it's matter, it's an agreement with Holiday Island Suburban Improvement District?
So let's just table this, I mean, we can, we can call a special meeting when I get this resolved.
Yeah, you have to, you basically have to find out if HISA's gonna go along with that.
Right.
I mean, we, we don't even know, where, where does the actual contract between us and HISA stand?
It, it's still being fine tuned, however, I take full responsibility for it. Because the last draft that came through had wording in it that, that we were going to require the county to purchase collision insurance for the vehicle that we're providing. And, and with the suburban improvement district and the city being listed as the payees, if the vehicle, if, if there's a, if there's a claim that the money would go to the city and the district, not to the county. And I thought that there's no way in the world that that's gonna fly, that we could just simply have a statement in there, and I know what they were trying to do. They were trying to, you know, prevent the county from being able to, you know, they totaled the car, just come back to us and say, well, we totaled your car, now we need another one, you know, that's, and that's a good idea. But, you know, I, I said, just put a simple sentence in there that says that the county is responsible to repair any damage or replace the vehicle with one of the equivalent value. And so that was the first thing that, that changed. And then the, the issue came up as a result of certain social media postings. The, the question arose as to whether or not, I wanted to confirm that the city, that I wanted to confirm for sure that the sheriff's department can enforce city ordinances. And I got that ruling from Justin today. He said he just happened to be working on that same issue with another small town that he represents. And, and the answer was yes, and he, he quoted the Arkansas code that allows for the, you know, for the deputies to serve, to issue citations for city ordinance violations. However, the contract that it was orig, as it was originally written, stated very specifically that the deputies would, would do in Holiday Island what they would ordinarily do in the county, which is enforce county traffic and criminal, state and local laws. So I had to have, I asked Justin to add a sentence that says something to the effect that, and issue citations for violations of city ordinances, that, where, where penalties could include a misdemeanor violation or something like that. Cause it, it had to be tied to some sort of misdemeanor violation.
I thought that was in the original.
So, so, and that just came up this afternoon, so I would expect it to take, you know, till next week this time probably to get the final draft back. And, and so we can meet at the same time to probably approve this.
Well, I, I don't think that horse, but is HISA willing to do the same, call special meetings and get this done?
I don't think they need to have special meetings to, to sign the contract, that's.
Well, I'm talking about, I, 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 I don't know how. I understand the urgency of getting the, the building, but again, this is stuff we're doing and trying to guess what's in the, the agreement with the sheriff's department and with HISA, we don't know.
Well, you've seen ninety-nine percent of the final contract. I, I distributed that, didn't I?
I, I read it someplace and that, and someplace in there said that they would enforce the.
A file back. But I guess, unless I've missed it, I haven't seen any evidence that HISA has.
Yeah, it was, it was the meeting on the fifteenth of February.
Has, has this, has HISA been discussing this?
Yes, and, and more importantly, our lawyer and HISA's lawyer have been working directly together to work out the contract, so we streamlined it from that standpoint that we don't have to get something from Justin, approve it, give it to the district, have them send it to their lawyer, have him come up with his version of it, go back upstream again and back and forth. So yes, it's frustrating that it's taking so long, but there's some pretty important things that we overlooked that, you know, have come up as a result of waiting. So it's not all bad that we've.
No, I'm not trying to apply that, but I, I guess the thing that bothered me about this whole process is that we talked about this last fall, we kept waiting on HISA, HISA, HISA to meet with you and go meet with the sheriff, and then that never happened, and then all of a sudden, they have a contract of their own. That's just concerning, really.
Well, since January, we've been working pretty close to, I don't know about January, but probably since January, we've been working pretty close on this. And yes, it's taken some time, but, you know, different things come up. We thought we had an agreement at one time, and then the sheriff said, said that the county doesn't have no, have money to buy another car, so we had to go back and.
I, I understand all that, Dan, but, you know, there's gonna be an election for a new sheriff.
Oh, we'll have it done before then.
Then we can get out of here.
All right.
And Dan, you also said the rental was six hundred a month, and paragraph three says it's eight hundred a month.
Okay. But it's, so you're gonna get credit?
It's three hundred a month in cash and five hundred in, in kind. The, the, he wants a statement.
Oh, okay.
At the end of the year that says that he donated five hundred dollars a month of, of value.
Read that whole sentence.
Okay, okay.
And talk about the ten dollars business, that's kinda like.
In the, in the second sentence, in consideration of ten dollars, another good consideration, receipt of which hereby is acknowledged?
Why do we have to have ten dollars to mine the agreement?
Well, we have to have consideration.
Bee Ridge, you have to have an exchange of consideration for Brian's contract.
Mine were always one dollar.
Well, a dollar.
That's okay.
You don't need to negotiate.
No, no, no.
Fred, I don't know, how many contracts that we make with people and there's never that same thing?
If you don't have consideration by both parties, there is no contract.
I thought the signature was a consideration.
Yeah.
Consideration.
Okay, all right.
But that was, I don't wanna say how many years ago.
All right. Interesting.
Oh, yeah, I thought we were.
Why are we meeting at the horse table?
All right, the next thing on the agenda, which I hope we get to sign at least one thing.
We need to vote a table in that.
Can't say we have.
We have motion.
We probably do.
Motion to table resolution twenty twenty-two zero zero three.
I'll move that we table resolution twenty twenty-two oh oh three.
Second.
Linda, made a motion, Lynn seconded it. Since this is just a resolution, I'm gonna call for a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Resolution number twenty twenty-two zero zero four, a resolution authorizing the city of Holiday Island to apply for a state aid city street grant program, or street program grant. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution? Jerry made a motion, Pat seconded it. We'll call a vote?
Question?
Since this wasn't on the agenda, that.
Well, it was, it just wasn't under.
I know, it wasn't under one I had.
So the motion was by?
Jerry.
Jerry. Seconded by Matt. Question? Roll call, Councilmember.
I had a question before roll call vote.
Too late?
No. It's too late. I, I asked you when I first saw this, you say Woodsdale, a hundred and seven thousand, a hundred and eighty-four feet. There's five thousand, two hundred and eighty feet in a mile, that means that damn road's twenty miles long, there ain't no shit in the way that things.
I'm sorry, I pulled this from an old document.
I'd already pointed that out.
I pointed it out too, if he didn't change it.
All right, I have just corrected that.
Okay.
But first we need to vote to, we need to, move to.
Move to approve.
Move to approve.
It's been done.
Okay, so now we'll read the resolution, resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero zero four. A resolution authorizing the city of Holiday Island to apply for a state aid city street program grant. Whereas the city of Holiday Island qualifies to participate in the Arkansas State Aid for Streets Program, and whereas the application and award of these grant funds require no financial commitment from the city, and whereas receiving these grants fun, funds would substantially boost the Holiday Island Street Resurfacing Program, now being resolved by the City Council of Holiday Island, that the mayor is authorized to apply for a grant to resurface Woodsdale Drive and State Line Drive from the intersection of Holiday Island Drive and the intersection with Woodsdale Drive. Fast and approved by the City Council of Holiday Island. Arkansas on this date of three fifteen twenty twenty-two.
Three fifteen.
Do we have any discussion other than Ken nitpicking me on a decimal point error?
Well, twenty miles of water is a big line.
I said we can't afford that.
Matter whether the state can.
Again.
Is there any discussion?
No.
And I'll call for a vote.
Okay, roll call.
Yep.
Councilmember Gumbus.
Aye.
Councilmember Elwin.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Benbin. All in favor?
All right, the resolution passes with three corrections, correcting town to city, correcting the date, and correcting the length of Woodsdale Drive. All right, next thing on the agenda is public comments, Barbara?
She's bad, she had all she could stand.
If you do, it's only a minute and a half at this point.
Well, no, but I, I thank you for whatever you're doing, cause I appreciate the number of hours that are spent. You're not gonna get everybody to like, you're gonna get likes and dislikes and.
I knew tonight was gonna be a late one, so. All right, councilmember comments?
I'll go shortly.
Okay.
We talked about social media earlier. I would like to throw out the fact, or the idea that we limit public comment, information posted, what the agenda is. I mean, we, we posted it on Holiday Island, Arkansas, and, you know, all sorts of misinformation from comments. Had a sheriff's candidate say that he wouldn't, doesn't matter what the city does, he might not enforce the contract.
So you're wanting to limit what?
Comments, up, up on social media.
How can we do that?
Turn them off.
When you post on, on those social medias, you can turn off comments?
I never do that to anybody.
Who's doing the posting?
Linda and I do, announcing our meetings.
Oh, okay.
And there's nothing wrong with that, I mean, the more, the more we get the agenda out there, it's fine.
Right.
But to give them a platform, and, and then there are some sites that doesn't even, I don't think they run our stuff, like the original Holiday Island neighbors and, I mean, I just make, that we, we post it on our website, we post it on the HISA newsletter, we post it on four or five social media platforms. That gives people the agenda, the opportunity to come to this meeting or watch it on Zoom and not tee it up for a hundred and fifty comments.
I don't approve of that.
Well, I, I'm to the point where I was gonna suggest we don't post on social media, period.
Well, that, I mean, it, it would appear it.
Not on Nextdoor, not on any Facebook, nowhere, cause like you said, we put it on the HISA newsletter and we get it on our, our website.
And we post on five locations around the?
Yeah, but posting on the website doesn't draw people's attention to it being there.
Right, I, I have no problem with them doing on social media, but I strongly urge that we limit comments.
I lean more in favor of getting as much information out there in public as we can, getting it in front of as many eyes as we can, so they, they know that we're for the people, we, we're interested in their thoughts and.
And the.
We'd like them to come to our meetings and stuff like that.
Yeah, the proper form is just like these people came tonight to come to the meeting and, and, or watch it on Zoom, or contact us ahead of time. But I mean, we're just, we're literally teeing it up for, you know, people that are five hundred yards driving.
So are we okay with just turning off comments?
If, if everyone agrees that's what they want, it's okay with me. I'm not particularly in favor of it, but if the majority is in favor, that's all we do.
I don't, I don't read them, so it doesn't make me do anything.
I think it makes me more knowledgeable about what's going on in people out there. In fact, I could go there and read, on one site I could read eight comments, on another site I could read twenty-six comments, and it gave me a, a feeling of what some of the comments read.
Except on some of those sites, they allow everything, sometimes they, the administrator, his or her references, it's, it's not.
Well, I'm not saying it's perfect.
Well, it's very far from it, but.
But just because somebody posts something negative doesn't make it bad. Cause I like to hear the negatives, I'd like.
Well, it, it, it's not just negative.
They brought out some really good points tonight.
Huh?
They brought out some very good points tonight that we need to talk about.
But I, I didn't recognize any of those people as the ones that posted.
There were four or five people that I know posted on social media. A lot of our mayor's message post.
I understand, but they were against it, that's their right. And they came and exercised the way to do it. But there were, for every one of those, there were ten that put out misinformation, used it to promote a campaign.
Well, I agree, I think that speaks more about him than, than any comment he makes about us or what we were doing. It, it certainly changed my, well, it didn't necessarily change my opinion, but. I don't, I, I, I guess I'm gonna, I, I would always err on the, on the, on the value of more input.
But it, it doesn't prevent them from starting.
I never answer any of those things.
Well, that's the other thing, if we're gonna allow it, somebody ought to.
I never read them.
I, I, you know, I depend on how the people do.
That's the thing, y'all may not read them, but I was the only one that hadn't been kicked off of all of them.
I've been kicked off every.
Yeah, I know, but.
I didn't, I don't even.
I mean, the misinformation is is just out of control.
Yeah. Well, it's the misinformation that gets spread all over.
That's right.
Well
And if you if you don't rebut it, then that's what people come to believe. But if you do rebut it, then you just get
Dragged down.
You know, then you've just, you know, jumped in the ring, you know, mud wrestling with everybody. And I've, you know, I've just decided not to do that, so.
If they don't put it on our posts, I will tell you, they will write their own post citing what we put out there and make their own comment on their own post, which will create another string of posts.
That's better than being on ours.
I I, I mean, so anyway, I was going to make this brief, but I wanted to say that.
How did, did, is we need to turn off comments on Facebook?
I've never done it. At first I heard you could do it when he told me tonight.
I don't know how to turn it off.
I don't either. Do you think there's a thing when you do a post that you can turn it off?
Well, I will explore that, but I'm pretty sure there is.
I know we can on Nextdoor, but I didn't know we could do that on Facebook. The private sites, administrators can delete stuff, but I don't know if they can. I don't know if we can on, I don't know.
Well, they all say that, you know, that this, you can't politic on it. But the one that got me was that sheriff's candidate promising a chicken in every pot and just at gals. And, you know, somebody should restrict it.
That was pretty outrageous when he said he wasn't going to enforce the ordinance.
He also said that if he's elected sheriff, that he'll provide two deputies for Holiday Island at no cost. He posted that.
That'll save us a lot of time.
Huh? He posted that the day he filed.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, I don't know what you're talking about now.
He's also going to have to convince the county board of that. Motion to adjourn. Well, schedule, schedule. First of all, I'm going to acknowledge that I skipped over the discussion the the updates to the planning commission, the zoning ordinance. We'll catch that at some future meeting and commission and the meeting scheduling.
April nineteenth is the next one, isn't it? Seven after I suppose you got me distracted, Jerry.
Well.
I don't know. My my mind turns off at about eight o'clock.
I'm pretty sure I'll be scheduling a a special meeting before that to get some of this stuff taken care of. All right. Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Ken made a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Lynn seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we adjourn.